Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
Excellent. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember Barrera, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Is it?
Councilmember Osornio?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Mayor Craig?
Here.
Thank you.
It's my understanding Councilmember Osornio and Councilmember Valenzuela let staff know they'll be a few minutes late. With that, I have an announcement. ID 24-591, the rejection of bids for the Salinas Municipal Airport Taxi Lane Rehabilitation Project has been tabled indefinitely. With that, we'll go on to our proclamations. The first one we have is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October. And I think we have Councilmember Rocha to give the proclamation.
Thank you so much. Such an important proclamation to read and truly honored to have the opportunity to do so. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and whereas in the United States, an estimated 220,000 women are expected to be diagnosed with an invasive breast cancer this year, and whereas the disease is responsible for more than 40,000 deaths annually in the United States, and whereas thanks to early detection at this time, there are 2.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States, and breast cancer deaths have declined by 39% in recent years, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month gives us the opportunity to renew our commitment to fight this disease by finding better ways to prevent, detect, and treat it, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month recognizes the survivors and people fighting this disease, as well as the families and loved ones who support them. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Salinas and urge all residents of this community to join in the efforts to increase awareness and prevention of breast cancer. Thank you, Mayor. And my former colleague, Councilwoman Christie Cromings, always made it a point to acknowledge this, and so I'm grateful that we're still doing it, even though she's no longer here in the capacity as a council member, and hopefully this continues in the years to come. Such an important topic. I'm not sure if there's a representative here from any particular group.
No, no. Do we have somebody from American Cancer Society? Nope? Okay. I got my finger wagged at me. So we will make sure that the appropriate organization gets that proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocha. On to Flood Preparedness Week. And I think we have Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes. Flood Preparedness Week, October 19th through 26th, 2024. Whereas California Flood Preparedness Week brings together state, federal, and local agencies to inform residents about risks associated with flooding and tools that citizens can use to prepare for flooding. And whereas several creeks, ditches, and waterways pass through the city of Salinas, including the Reclamation Ditch, Santa Rita Creek, Gabuland Creek, Nativinet Creek, Alisal Creek, and Car Lake. And whereas the city of Salinas maintains an extensive storm drainage network and a sandbag station in case of flooding. And whereas city staff from Public Works and Community Development work to reduce the community's flood risks and flood awareness, and whereas while no one knows when or where disasters and emergencies may strike, each of us can work to be prepared for the unexpected. Taking steps to prepare ahead of time can help individuals and communities respond better and stay safer during crisis. And whereas the time and effort invested now in assessing flood risk and in preparing will help Salinas residents navigate through and recover quickly from whatever may come, the time to act is now, before the rainy season sets in. And whereas individuals can help prepare themselves by registering their cell phones and home address to receive emergency alerts from the Alert Monterey County website, sign up for alerts by texting their zip codes to 65513, and learn about flood preparedness by going to the Public Works Development Engineering website. Now therefore, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, does hereby proclaim October 19th through 26th as Flood Preparedness Week in Salinas and calls upon community members to join together to understand their flood risk and take steps to be prepared.
Thank you. And I believe we have Fernando Riso, an Assistant Engineer here, to receive the proclamation.
Thank you.
Looks like we have a few engineers with us.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm gonna jump in. So I just wanted to let you know it is Flood Preparedness Week. The city does, we do participate in a voluntary program, national program. This is the community rating system. We are a Class VII community. That means that this team here keeps us in a certain classification where the community as a whole, if they have flood insurance, they receive a 15% discount because of all the work they do.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So if you wouldn't mind hanging, yes, there we go. If you wouldn't mind hanging around just a quick moment, we'll do a couple more proclamations and then we'll have a group photo. Thank you. And we have Veterans Day, November 11th.
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
And these people that we're gonna honor today are, they've been through floods. They've been through a lot of danger protecting this country, so we want to thank them for that. Also, there's other veterans here we would like to say thank you. On Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024. Whereas on June 4, 1926, Congress passed a resolution directing the President to issue a proclamation calling the observance of November 11th as Armistice Day, which is a truce, and an act approved on May 13, 1935, that the 11th day of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. Whereas with respect to and recognition of the folks in front of us and many other veterans of the significant contributions these service members have contributed to the preservation of this great nation, on June 1, 1954, Congress approved an act that changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Whereas in every era, freedom has been threatened, and the brave men and women of our Army, Air Force, Marine Corps, Navy, and Coast Guard have demonstrated an unmatched selflessness, and their service makes a difference in the lives of all of us. So thank you. Whereas our nation pauses in solemn remembrance and deep appreciation for all our veterans that have volunteered to serve in our U.S. Armed Forces. And whereas the Monterey County Veterans Day Parade Committee, who are in front of us, will hold its 14th Annual Veterans Day Parade on November 11, 2024. Now therefore, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby observe November 11, 2024 as Veterans Day and remember the sacrifice of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage freedom. Thank you very much.
We certainly want to take a moment and allow you the microphone.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this time. My heart swells with pride. You know, Veterans Day is a day for those who served, a day for those who are serving right now that are in harm's way in the Middle East, and a day for those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, like my nephew, who was killed in 2014, his son, who was killed in 2011, and her cousin. You know, this is a prideful day for us to remember them. The term is kind of a slogan, but it means everything in the world to us, that freedom is not free. What we do every single day is off the backs, floats off the backs of those who sacrificed, these men and women that willingly gave their lives for our country. And we honor them every day. What you see is just a taste of the volunteers that have this parade. On our first parade, we had 5,000 people observe it, 35 participants. Last year, we had over 25,000 people and 140 people. This shows you the love that Monterey County has and Salinas has and support that your council and leadership has for the veterans out here. We touch the main vein out here, and they love it. I encourage everybody that's hearing me today, here and online, come out and enjoy it. Come out to our opening ceremonies. Come out and see our brothers and sisters. See these people in uniform that are old in their 80s, that when you look in their eye, I swear, they're 18 all over again. That's the payday we have. I promise you, it's a day, it's worth it, 364 days that we work and do it, that's our payday. That's our payday that we volunteer for. And I thank you for all your support throughout the years. And Mayor, for you, it's a funny thing I want to share, your first time that I met you, you cruised down on roller skates, you know, in your derby thing, and I respect that. But as a council member, you had our back every single year. And I truly want to thank you for that. And as our mayor, I knew that you were always there to support us. And I want to give you something on behalf of the Veterans Day Parade Committee. A challenge coin for everyone to see here, it is a simple piece of metal, but what's in this piece of metal goes all of our love and valor that we hand out to our people that we think deserve it. What it has is our Veterans Day Parade and has every emblem of our branch here. What you're taking here is nothing but love and honor, and I know your father served, and I know that you have that. So I'd like to pass this on to you, Mayor, if I may please.
It would be my honor. Thank you.
And then it's passed in a handshake.
That is an honor, and I will display it proudly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind sticking around for a photo op, we have one more to go. So thank you. Councilmember Barrera, would you mind passing down? We have a, I was hoping Councilmember Osornio would be here on time, but we have Councilmember Valenzuela down at the end. So you're gonna get it cold turkey.
Perfect. Okay.
We have the Library Literary Services 40th Literacy, excuse me, Library Literacy Services 40th Anniversary, so.
Whereas in 1984, the Salinas Public Library was one of the original 27 California public library systems, establishing a library literacy program for adults, which has now grown to more than 105 participating library systems. And whereas, for 40 years, the Adult Literacy Program has provided programs and services responsive to the evolving needs of adults across Salinas, supporting their individual literacy needs and goals. And whereas, the Adult Literacy Program plays a vital role in helping adults improve their reading, writing, speaking, and comprehension skills, as well as that of their families and their community, including the literacy level of their children and other family members. And whereas, the Adult Literacy Program serves more than 400 adults each year with individual tutoring, small group, and classroom programs, including basic computing classes that help bridge the digital divide. And whereas, the city of Salinas and Salinas Public Library recognize the valuable contributions made by the literacy program staff, librarians, and library workers in supporting the aspirations of community members. And whereas, the learner-focused, goal-driven programs and services contribute to participants' ability to improve job skills, support their family and children's literacy growth, advancing civic participation, and shared community goals. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, hereby proclaims October as Library Literacy Month and encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of literacy resources and services available.
And I believe we have Ernesto Liza Hola, our Community Education Manager. Hi.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome.
Councils, Madam Mayor, I'd like to just mainly recognize all the library staff now and throughout time that have been helping adult learners throughout Salinas not only improve themselves, but also who have been learning to contribute more to this community, whether it's through learning how to read, getting their GED, passing their citizenship, or just learning more to be able to help their students with their schoolwork. And it is a testament to the community that's always growing. I'd like to specifically recognize two students that went through our literacy program who are now library employees, that are now providing the service to new learners. We have Maribel Torres, who has been with the city for 23 years after completing or going through our literacy program, and Margarita Romero, who is, has been with the literacy program for over 25 years after being a student through the program itself. So I'd like to thank them and the library staff.
Thank you. And actually, we'll do it backwards here. If, Council, if we can maybe stand up for photos, and we'll do the Library Literacy Services first, then the veterans, then Flood Preparedness Week. All right. We are gonna go on to public comment. If you wish to make general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Email public comments received have been distributed to the council and will be entered into the record. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments, depending on the agenda schedule. We are now open for public comment on items that are not on the agenda and that are in the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on agenda items should be held until the items are reached. We are now open for public comment. Welcome.
Good late afternoon, everyone. I just want to offer a prayer to the city council members and the mayor and everyone in the room, and if you would like to join me, please do. It is the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless and keep each one of you. Make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give each one of you peace. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Name is Eric Peterson. Just a couple things. Since we're talking veterans today, this morning, the Board of Supervisors gave out the County of Monterey Military and Veterans Affairs Advisory Commission's Veterans of the Year for 2024. And one of the people who got that award, Salinas resident and former acting police chief, John Murray. And what it says is really neat, but one of the things that really caught my eye was, well, one of the things was he was in M60 machine gun training. That's a little scary. But he, I can't find it. Anyway, he got an award as the number one Air Force Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, and they flew him to Florida because he got the award directly from the Chair of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. And that's not chopped liver. The main reason I'm here is there's this little free paper online out of San Jose called San Jose Spotlight. And they had an article recently, the headline is "San Jose Selects First Homeless Sleeping Site." And this is an area where people can go and pitch their tents. It's on Taylor Street, if you're familiar with San Jose. It's like that far from a business some friends of mine had years ago. And they have security, they have sanitation. It doesn't say point blank, but it kind of implies they don't have sweeps. And it's almost embarrassing for San Jose to do better than we do. We can do better than San Jose. I mean, they've got all sorts of corruption going and stuff like that, right? They've got a dueling corruption between a police issue and an elections issue. Figure that one out. But to get back to this, they are providing someplace for homeless to sleep, and it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Thank you all for a wonderful job you are all doing. I especially want to thank Councilmember Sandoval. He's making a positive difference. We are his constituents. We always keep asking him the hard questions. We wear this man out. He is so courageous, so good, so honorable. He's found money that is owed to this city. He's worked on contracts, all these unpopular things. And now that we have a new city manager, and when I went to the meeting about what do you want with city manager, we wanted him to love our city, make everybody work together, not them and us, not the rich and the poor, everyone working together, and to go over all the contracts, because we're tired of hearing there's no money to do a project. And, well, we, yeah, that contract's there, but you know, we've been doing this for the last 10 years. Oh, well, it's not the letter of the law that says the contract, but so what? Well, so what doesn't cut it? And Mr. Mendez, I also heard at that meeting that you'd be making $300,000 a year. All I'm saying is, I'm happy to spend that on you. If you can go through the contracts, make sure what is written is what happens. That's all we're asking. Nothing special, just if it's written down, it should be done. And I want to thank all of you up there for taking on this responsibility. Some of you are not liked. Well, that's because you are forward-thinking, you are doing your jobs, and I commend you for that. And please, city manager, take some of the heat off of these wonderful people. I'm putting a lot on your plate. And Mayor, I will miss you, and thank you all very much.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, city council members. My name's Alejandra Garcia. I serve as the Government Affairs Manager for Comcast, and I oversee Monterey and Santa Cruz Counties. I'm here today to express Comcast's dedication in partnering with the city in advancing broadband infrastructure and connectivity to the residents of Salinas. For many years, Comcast has been focused on closing the digital divide and creating greater digital equity programs, most recently with our liftstone partner, the Boys and Girls Club of Monterey County. I look forward to the presentation of the Salinas Broadband Master Plan, and I eagerly anticipate collaborating closely with the city council and other stakeholders to improve broadband infrastructure in the city of Salinas. Should you, your team, or the residents of Salinas have any questions, please contact Comcast and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Jessica Sarritos, and I am a City of Salinas Neighborhood Services Coordinator and also a current facilitator of the 2024 Community Leadership Academy. The goal of the Community Leadership Academy is to engage and educate community-level leaders who want to expand their leadership capacity to enact positive social changes. Participants are engaging in a series of 12 workshops over a total of six weeks, where they gain leadership tools and information to plan a community impact project. Members have been able to connect with city staff representatives and learn about city services through different department presentations. I am pleased to say that the academy participants are here to participate in a city council meeting, many for the first time, and to provide public comment, also a lot for the first time. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Craig and city council members. My name is Blanca Pauda. I live in District 6. I am currently attending the 2024 Community Leadership Academy. I'm also a Commissioner for District 6 in the Traffic and Transportation Department. I support walkable neighborhoods. Walkable neighborhoods allow people to ride bicycles, ride skateboards, push baby strollers, and wheelchairs, and yes, walk. People can walk, for example, to their neighborhood schools, parks, grocery stores, restaurants, and libraries. Creek Bridge does not have a library we can walk to. There are multiple elementary schools and a high school in the neighborhood. Also, the city of Salinas has recently approved houses to be built in that area, so the students and all members of the community will benefit from the wonderful and engaging programs, services, and activities offered by a neighborhood library. So I ask that you please consider building a new library in Creek Bridge to help support a walkable neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Roberto Garcia. I am a resident of Salinas in District 1. I am a member of the 2024 Leadership Academy. Over the past few months, there has been an increase of speeding vehicles on Ryder Avenue between Del Monte Avenue and Freedom Parkway. We have Frank Paul Elementary School in the area, where families walk their children to and from school daily. We constantly observe speeding vehicles making it dangerous for families to cross the street, because the speeding vehicles will not slow down or even stop at the crosswalks. Due to the reckless speeding, there has been loss of property. My family alone lost two vehicles to a reckless speeder. Just this past Sunday, another reckless driver speeding down the street took out another three vehicles on our street, right next door to my house. Thankfully, there was no one in the vehicles or children in the area at the time. I urge you, Mayor and Salinas City Council, to install speed bumps on Ryder Avenue to prevent further loss of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi there. Hello, people of Salinas and the Salinas County, Salinas representatives. My name is Baruch Alex Perez, and I reside in District 6 in the city of Salinas. I am also a student at the City of University of San Jose. I am also a student at the City of University of San Jose and also a member of the 2024 Community Leadership Academy. The problem I'd like to introduce today is the inadequate lighting at Creek Bridge Park. The lack of proper illumination affects various groups of recreational users like families, dog walkers, and joggers. The after-hours is where the lack of illumination heightens the vulnerability of recreational users like myself. The vulnerability, the lack of illumination, heightens the vulnerability of individuals to commit criminal acts. And Salinas is also known in the past for having criminal activity, but the other residents like myself who use the park regularly don't use the park after hours due to the lack of visibility in the park. The virus trend of 2018 and the Alice Sound Neighborhood revitalization strategy both called for action for more lighting, but I've yet to see any action or plan to discuss this issue. If I may, I may urge the Salinas Council members to help me light up our city literally and figuratively. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, alcaldeza y miembros del consilio. Uno momento para traducción. Gracias.
We have the translator on Zoom.
Yeah, but I'm here.
Oh, on Zoom, okay.
I'm here.
Okay, excellent.
I'll do it on Zoom, as always.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Buenas tardes, alcaldeza y miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Marisela Ramírez, y vivo en el Distrito Seis. Soy miembro de la Academia de Liderazgo Comunitario del año 2024. En el año 2023 se aprobaron 27,500 dólares para trabajar en un semáforo en la área de Santa Rita, que es en la Isla Amar y en la Norme. Y ya después de que se aprobó esos, ese presupuesto, después de eso han habido muchos accidentes todavía en esa área. Entonces, sé que hay procesos que se deben de seguir para empezar a trabajar en este semáforo, y también sé que hay una luz de cruce, pero no es suficiente. Entonces, a mí, este, me gustaría que si pudieran poner topes o más letreros que diga que hay una luz de cruce en esa área estaría mucho mejor para mantener a las familias seguras porque yo he pasado en esa calle y todo el tiempo están usando esa calle como un freeway cuando en realidad no debería de ser así. Entonces, pues, este, agradezco que hayan aprobado este dinero, pero también, este, me gustaría que hubiera más letreros o algo que, por el momento, sé que hay procesos que se deben de seguir, pero también me gustaría que hubiera más seguridad para la comunidad que están cruzando esa calle. Gracias.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Marisela Ramírez, and I live in District Six. I am part of the Leadership Academy of 2024, and in 2023, they approved a budget for $27,500 to install a light in Santa Rita. It is in East Lane and North Main. It was approved due to the accidents, but there's still a lot of accidents. There's still a lot of things that are happening. Cars are speeding, so it is not enough. I'm asking to please install speed bumps in the area or maybe like beacon lights when people are crossing. People, even though there are lights, they still use that place as a freeway. They speed there, so we need speed bumps, signages, you know, more safety for the people that cross the street and use that crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consilio y alcaldeza. Mi nombre es Araceli Merino. Soy parte de la Academia de Liderazgo 2024. Vivo en el Distrito Cuatro. He visto la necesidad en el parque César Chávez, que es un lugar familiar donde los padres llevan a sus hijos a convivir, a jugar, a pasar un buen rato, pero también he visto que no hay luz, no hay suficiente alumbramiento, y creo que es una necesidad más ahora con el cambio de horario, y casi siempre los padres, pues, van en la tarde con sus hijos porque, pues, en el día trabajan. Entonces, creo que si habría la forma de trabajar en esto, de darle mantenimiento como, porque creo que así están los postes, entonces sería como mantenimiento para que alumren, y también dar mantenimiento a los baños. Sé que hay baños, pero muchas veces están cerrados, están muy sucios. Entonces, si se pudiera trabajar en eso estaría muy bien, como darle mantenimiento al parque en cuanto al alumbramiento y a los baños. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Araceli Merino, and I am part of the Leadership Academy of 2024. I live in District Four, and I'm here to talk about the park, the César Chávez. That is a family place where a lot of families take their childrens to play and spend a family and quality time. But the problem is the lightning. There is not enough streetlights, there is not illumination, and the thing is that right now with the, with the change in hour, it gets dark earlier, and people can only take their children to the park after work. So even though I do see the streetlights, there's not enough illumination, so I think that what they need is maintenance. Another thing, I see bathrooms, but most of the time they are closed and dirty, so we need to give maintenance to the bathrooms. So basically, I'm here to advocate for the park of César Chávez, so they improve the maintenance of the streetlights and bathrooms.
Okay, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, alcaldeza y concejales. Mi nombre es Jennifer Molina. Pertenesco al Distrito Uno y soy miembro de Liderazgo Comunitario 2024. Quiero agradecer por los trabajos realizados en la calle Tao. Cuando regreso a casa después de la escuela, me siento tranquila al pasar esta calle muy bien trabajada. Agradezco su atención a lo que verdaderamente es necesario, como esta calle que tenía muchos hoyos y estaba en mal estado, y ahora está bien. Me encantaría seguir viendo estos cambios en la calle del Monte Avenue, que son calles cotidianos de uso por todos los de hasta hoy. Felicidades. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Molina. Good afternoon, members of the council, Madam Mayor. I am part of the Leadership Academy of 2024. And first of all, I want to thank you for the work that has been on Tao Street. It is a well-done job. I feel very comfortable and safe when I'm walking back from school, and I appreciate you paying attention to the community's need. But I'm also here because I would like to see the same thing happen, for example, in Montevero Avenue. I would like to see the potholes and the streets also improved because that is a street that we use daily. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Araceli Márquez. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having us the opportunity to be here. I'm a member of the 2024 Community Leadership Academy, and as well as my peers, I would like to have more lights and luminars by each Alice Sound and Tao. As you know, by November, we were changing our lights, time changed, and it will be more darker. So as Natchebra, Pacheco, and North Salinas has been in a safety and more lights, I would like to see more lights over our McDonald's and Holiday Street. Also, between the time change of November, it's not just the holidays are coming along, but also most of our farmers' families, they are not working, and there might be walking more, taking transportation, and sometimes they take the city bus. So by having more lights and more luminars, we continue to have our community enjoy our beautiful, it's Salinas has always been. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos, señora alcaldeza, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Adelfo García López. Vivo en el Distrito Uno, soy perteneciente a la Academia de Liderazgo 2024, y vengo aquí para hacer una petición más que nada, ¿verdad? En el cruce de la, de la tienda Fútbol Es hacia el Autozone, no hay un cruce peatonal marcado como tal, hay uno pegado a la boronda, pero no hay uno que esté marcado del Autozone hacia el, la Fútbol Es básicamente. Y lo que yo he visto, porque hago ahí tareas cotidianas de entre semana, comprar comida, lavar ropa los fines de semana, y veo que las personas cruzan la calle, ¿me entiendes? Cruzan, si los carros se tienen que detener, a veces los carros pasan muy, muy rápido, entonces a mí me gustaría señalizaciones o quizás más policía para que ver las personas no crucen esa parte porque es muy peligroso, tanto para las personas como el conductor. Y yo como conductor también, ¿a quién, quién va a tener la culpa? Yo. ¿Por qué? Porque es el peatón realmente el que tiene la, entre que debe estar a salvo aquí. Esa es una, y también darles gracias por todo su dedicación. Yo como miembro de la Academia de Liderazgo, me he dado cuenta cuánto es su afecto por personas que no tenemos tantas oportunidades abiertas como no nacer en este país, y ver cuánto es el apoyo que nos tratan igual a un ciudadano o como alguien que quiere lograr eso más que solamente venir a hacer un desmane, ¿verdad? Nosotros, como la Academia de Liderazgo, nos hemos dado cuenta que hay mucho apoyo. Doy gracias por eso y por todos los trabajos, como todas las oportunidades que nos dan. Muchas gracias por eso.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Adelfo García López, and I'm from District One. I'm also part of the Leadership Academy of 2024, and I'm here basically to make a petition. So at the Autozone, at the cross of Autozone and Fútbol Es, there is not a lot of signage, cars, I'm sorry, cars are speeding, so there is no safety for the pedestrians. So I would like to improve, for example, policing or to have more signage because that crossroad, that cross is very dangerous. And the thing is that it's not only dangerous for the pedestrians, but for the drivers too, because the pedestrians are the ones that have the right of path. So if something happens to the pedestrians, the drivers are responsible. So I would like to improve the signage there and the police vigilance. Also, I want to thank you for all the dedication and all the opportunities in the academy. I have been able to realize that city council is a city council that supports all of us and not only the people that are born in the United States, but people that come here for looking for better opportunities. And I really appreciate all the support and all the work you are doing to improve our livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Muy buenas tardes a todos los miembros del consil y a la mayor alcaldeza, Kimberly. Solamente gracias, quiero agradecer por todas las atenciones que han prestado hacia, hacia la ciudad y hacia la comunidad. Un problema muy crítico, yo creo que eso es hacia todos, que la mayoría se ha oído de que la juventud de hoy en día, este, ha tenido problemas con la velocidad de los carros que tienen, y este, y debemos poner más atención con los jóvenes en ese aspecto. Y este, otra de las cosas es que se ha visto mejorías en la ciudad, muchas mejorías. Yo vivo en el, en el Distrito Dos, y este, y se ha notado, y quiero agradecer a todos por esa atención. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members, city council. I am here to really appreciate all the support and all the attention that you've given to the city and the community. One of the things that I have noticed is the problem that the youth have with speeding. There's, there's cars that are speeding, so we really have to pay attention to that. The city has to focus more on that, and I live in District Two, and I want to appreciate all the things that you have done for the district and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Capori, and I'm a member of the downtown street. I don't know if you guys have knowledge of that, that we are the one that cleaned the street here around Salinas. And my complaint is, I've been for three months, I've been asking the, calling the city, I know a guy called Jose, that I live around there in his markers, and I had to cross Madera in his market for three months. I've been asking him, please, if you guys can fix that signal over there, because there's no beeping, and I'm completely, almost completely blind, and it's hard for me to cross the street right there. And I had to take a chance because it sounds, I cross the street, it makes a sound, but sometimes I can even hear it, and I almost got hit over there. I don't know if you guys remember that a little kid got killed over there, and the signals are not working. I appreciate it, if you guys can send somebody there to fix that traffic light over there, the signal. I've been asking for the last three months. Another thing that I want to bring it up is the Stone family, they're doing a great community job around here in Salinas. Every Tuesday, they go pick up from the food bank, and it goes around to bring food to those who kind of get out of the house. On Friday, we go to Rico Street, and we distribute food. They distribute food for almost 30, 40 peoples. But the thing is that they don't have the economical position to be driving everywhere, and they just would like to, because they're doing this work for the community, they, there's any, obviously here in Salinas, they can help them with a gas car, or at least once a month, so they can, they can go around and distribute all the food that they need to give to the community, that they've been doing that for almost 20 years, and they should appreciate it. They can get a little help from the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi, welcome.
My name is, I'm evangelist Levon Stone. My husband is a Fort Ord veteran. He was in the infantry. He fell down a mountain with a 100-pound machine gun on his back. These families that were here when Fort Ord was in full flame, they are being pushed out. They're being pushed out. For the African-American community, we're only like 3% in the whole county. We don't get the help that we need. When we call on any agency, we get people on the phone that don't know what the heck they're doing, and they don't know who you're supposed to talk to. They said, we'll call you back. You don't get a call back. We have dozens of sections of government that should be serving the people. That's what you're here for. We are servants, you're servants, but you're in a special place where you serve us and you also get paid. But the thing about it is, we are not getting what we need. Like the young man said, we need gas cards, we need finances, we don't have money. I worked for the U.S. government for years here on Fort Ord, and I have been treated very, very badly. I know some of you know my name, and some of the people in here know our name. We feed people every Friday. We pick up food. We have a line all the way down. We don't care who it is, what you look like, where you come from, how much money you got. If you need food, we give you food. And so we are asking you to please pay attention. I was born in the United States. We are being treated worse than, than people that fly down out of the sky or whatever. That is not right, it's not fair. Somebody needs to pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Otavio Lucas. Nunca hablado aquí en el público, pero quería decir unas cosas. Ya lo dijeron las personas. Lo que pasó es que ahorita no me di cuenta qué pasó cuando pasaron el trofeo de la persona porque no hubo intérprete que tuvo diciendo en español, para uno darse cuenta lo que está pasando como la primera vez. Pero sí oye una persona que pasaron diciendo lo que necesitamos en el área de Salinas. Es triste reconocer que estamos en un país liberal y carecemos de muchas cosas. Podemos gritar, hablar... Podemos gritar, hablar, y no nos escuchan. Personas que están necesitando para las escuelas, ayuda para las calles, no lo hacemos. Lo hacemos lo mínimo. Estamos en un país riquísimo. ¿Dónde está el dinero? Para la comunidad, para la gente, para los niños que lo necesitan. Nosotros ya vamos de salida. Vamos a dejar atrás Salinas, California, un mundo nuevo para los hijos. Porque nosotros ya estamos más allá que para acá. Vivimos, pero hay que dejar un camino como ustedes que tienen ese poder, que ven que ganan, cómo sacar el dinero, pero hay que darle uso para la gente que viene atrás. Estoy en la... donde está, los que van aquí en la hospital Natividad, está un campo de fútbol. Dígame ustedes, y la tristeza tienen que pagar para que vayan padres los hijos ahí a jugar, viendo que es público, ese es del condado, y están cobrando. ¿Por qué no hay un parque para la comunidad, que lleguen los hijos y que no paguen? Eso es para nuestros hijos, y no lo hay. Entonces, ¿qué estamos haciendo? Hay que despertar, porque realmente es triste que en las escuelas se junten los grupos ahí que no caben. ¿Por qué no hacemos esos parques para esos niños que quieren jugar y que no paguen? No hay dinero. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Octavio Lucha, and it's the first time I'm ever here, the first time I've ever made a public comment. I don't know what other people have said, because there's no Spanish interpreter. I couldn't understand what they were saying in Spanish, so I don't know what they said before. But what I do want to say is that I think Salinas needs a lot of things. Sometimes we want to yell and we want to scream, but we don't do it, because there's a lot of family needs, the community needs. We're almost on the way out, but what about our children? What about leaving them a better world, a better place to live in? We're almost on our way out, but there's money here. This is one of the richest countries in the world, and where is that money going? What are we doing to help the people that live here? Like, for example, by Natividad Hospital, there's a soccer field there, and it's so sad, because the families have to pay money to play there. Why? It's a public place, it's from the county. Why do I have to pay? Why do the children, why do the parents have to pay to be able to play with their children? What is happening? There's no money. We have to wake up. It is sad. There are places where children play, and there's not enough space. They need places where they can play and they don't have to pay for them.
Okay, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, so good afternoon. I'm Eloise Jim. So I just wanted to make a comment about, well, I'm a board member on the Historic Resources Board, and I understand that the city recently purchased, in Chinatown, the Republic Cafe. And so in December of 2010, the Department of Toxic Substances tested the soil for toxicity, because there was a gas plant on Bridge Street in Chinatown. And it was, that gas plant was there between 1879 and 1929. And so they had to be testing it for residue from oil and coal, and they were just in the Phase One of it. And so then they said they were going to be drilling holes and putting concrete after they tested the soil. So before people started inhabiting the buildings that get rehabilitated for the museum, the Chinese museum, I think the public deserves to have a report about the toxicity of that soil. Because, yeah, it just, the public needs to know that that soil is environmentally sound. The other thing I wanted to say is that my father, Joseph Shim, was a veteran in the Navy. And although I was raised by my mother, one of the first conversations I had with him, he told me that he was a Frog Man, and I thought that was like a Sesame Street character, but in World War II, those were Navy SEALs.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, alcaldesa, concejales y público en general. Mi nombre es Graciela, vivo en el Distrito Uno y soy miembro de la Academia de Liderazgo Comunitario de este año 2024, y quería agradecer por esta oportunidad. La verdad, he aprendido bastante, y también he tenido esa oportunidad de conocer a cada parte de las personas que trabajan en estas ciudades salinas, y pues agradezco todo ese esfuerzo que han estado haciendo para mejorar esta ciudad. Y también quería hacer como una petición, como había mencionado anteriormente, yo vivo en el Distrito Uno, y uno de los problemas que he notado mucho ahí es que en la calle Boronda está muy oscuro. Bueno, yo uso lentes, no sé si solo sea por eso, pero la verdad siento que está muy oscuro. Me da mucho miedo manejar de noche en esa calle, y pues vivo ahí, entonces prácticamente casi paso con mucho miedo. Entonces, por eso me gustaría mucho que hubiera más alumbramiento en esta calle, y si se pudiera hacer, y también pues agradezco por todos esos proyectos que han realizado, y eso es todo. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and everybody in general. My name is Graciela, and I am part of the Leadership Academy of 2024. And first of all, I want to thank you for all the opportunities that have been provided. I have learned so much about what the city council does and all the work they do and all the projects that they have to help the community, but I also have a petition. I'm from District One, as I said before, and one of the problems is that Boronda Street, that street is very dark. I don't think it has enough lightning. I use glasses, so for me it's really hard to see in that street. I live near that street, so I always have to drive there. So for me, it's hard to be able to drive with so little lightning. So I ask if they can please improve the lightning on that street. And also, I appreciate all the projects and the other things that the city council is doing for the community.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, José Guerra, Montevia Community. This letter we have here is going to be for the city manager, Rene Mendez, current chief of police. Don't know who that is. I wish it was John Murray, but that's Mr. Mendez's calling that. City council member Tony Barrera, Mr. David Jacobs, Ms. Christian Lindquist, and co-enforcement David Gonzálvez and Lorenzo Sánchez. I'm going to read this letter to you. We had an incident in Montevia last year Halloween. Young member, young kid didn't live there, got stabbed, and there was a couple fights and things like that. So the Montevia Community Neighborhood Watch community and residents are concerned with the upcoming Halloween night in our neighborhood. Last year, our community was invaded by non-residents, which brought extra cars and created uncomfortable crowds. Throughout the non-residents, which brought cars, extra crowds, also, there were several individuals in the neighborhood exchanging verbal and physical contact, fighting. This is what resulted in individuals being attacked and stabbed in the Montevia Park. We are requesting that the gates be closed at five o'clock that day, Halloween Day, at the parks. Nobody parks there. Along with the presence of possible, maybe one law enforcement officer patrolling there, because last year it was a zoo. Possible to avoid another situation like last year. We want to keep our neighborhoods safe for our children and our residents. We have attached all the signatures, the people that signed it. So this is the actual form. These are the signatures. So when people say that, "We don't have signatures," we have, they're here. So I'm going to turn this in to you guys, to the city clerk if I can. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Please close the gates.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, the signatures were captured in one day, so that does represent, you know, maybe twelve hours worth of work. You probably could have had more if we had more time. There's two different ways of approaching something. One is proactive, the other is reactive. The reactive response of the city is four or five policemen coming out to help somebody who's been shanked violently during Halloween. The proactive response is closing the gate on time, having people patrol the area, so that way you're not using a five police for what one patrol car could do. Our community loves Halloween. My neighbors, they put up stuff, and I know that... The community loves the city and the outlying communities. And much of what our community does is anticipation of a celebration that is inclusive to all of the city. This is a celebration of the city. We from Montevia are expressing the need for some security controls to make everybody safe and for us allowing to continue to host these activities. Please help us provide these services. I know that there's a lot of communication about, you know, discrimination and what are minorities. The African-American community is like one of the true minority groups. And so if you hear this group asking for help, please put your money where your mouth is and support them, because putting your money where your mouth is doesn't mean you're putting it into your mouth. You're putting it into the mouths of others so they can too, can eat and get the help that they need to survive. Thank you so much. We do anticipate your support, and we're thankful for it.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm David Mason. Hello, everybody. I was, I'm overwhelmed by everything that has been talked about just now, between the lighting and the parks and all of that. All I wanted to do was say thank you to Building Healthy Communities of Monterey County. For last night, we had a candidates forum, and for those of you who were there, it was fun. And it was outside the box. A lot of the questions were, at least for me, a lot of the questions were way outside the box of what I thought the city would do. But after hearing a lot of these people tonight, I have to reconsider my thoughts. So I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Peter Zelayn, North Salinas. This election is about good governance. Although it's been framed by a well-funded group called Protect Salinas, really should be called Purchase Salinas, as a referendum on a dysfunctional city council. They're confusing a few unfortunate behaviors and a general willingness to question with a negative working environment that has supposedly sown resignations and chaos. Asking questions is essential to good governance. We should develop a culture that welcomes scrutiny as a way to reach better decisions. True dysfunction is when habit, protecting one's turf, favoritism, or complacencies result in obstruction, vindictiveness, delay, or lack of response. Every governmental entity always complains about staff and budget shortcomings. There are always more requests for service than resources to meet those requests. Your task, those who will be reelected and those who will be newly elected, is to examine each dollar you decide to spend to make amply sure that dollar is being spent in the best possible way, knowing dollars are limited. You're all good at praise, offer it frequently, but you should also be good at not routinely accepting a lack of resources for a lack of responsiveness. Sometimes it's just an excuse. Sometimes there are other factors such as leadership, misdeficiencies, bad choices. Sometimes we need to change what we've always done before. Asking questions and a willingness to change are essential parts of good governance. Protect Salinas from what? Questions and change? No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to comment in general public comment? All right, I'll go ahead and close general public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public wish to comment in general public comment? Looks like we have a couple hands raised. We'll start first with Liz C. Liz C, welcome. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to say thank you to all of the council members and everyone up there who is actively encouraging the residents of Salinas to vote. I especially want to recognize those of you who are up for reelection and are choosing to remain positive amidst all the negative propaganda surrounding us. However, I must express my disappointment and shame towards the leaders of the agricultural communities in our town who have funded these divisive campaigns. It's embarrassing to see prominent names in our community pushing narratives that serve only their interests while creating a rift amongst us. I also want to call out the candidates being supported by these leaders for their silence during this process. It is essential to stand up against division and work towards unity in our community. Additionally, I'm a resident of District One, and I just implore you to look for, to fix the lights on Boronda and Williams. It is a serious public safety issue, and it is negligence at this point. Those intersections are pitch dark and difficult to navigate, putting our residents at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more hand raised. Robin, welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Craig. Our city is facing serious issues of non-transparency and lack of accountability. We see candidates backed by special interest groups, some embodying the toxicity of current leaders, while others downplay dysfunction. Some even suggest that a 2.75% rent increase is enough to address inflation, ignoring the struggles of many residents. Despite a diverse group of local volunteers, the Measure G Oversight Committee, supported by this council, has not demanded budget transparency for nearly a decade. Meanwhile, candidates and incumbents oversimplify complex issues, and some are even citing racism, which creates a troubling undercurrent. We've had a council member advise a female constituent to, quote, "put herself in check," unquote, for advocating for a marginalized group in front of a council comprised of, quote, "people of color," unquote. We cannot tolerate such racist comments or the inability of our leaders to distinguish between racism and urban inequality. This convenient rhetoric only serves to promote community division. Finally, Mayor Craig, I wish I could share your optimism about the entire pool of candidates for this upcoming election. Obviously, I do not. Nonetheless, I think it's important to recognize that you have navigated difficult situations with grace throughout your term, and I will miss your professional and intelligent presence. I applaud you for your decision to seek more balanced and fulfilling opportunities, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors and in whatever life has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, we will go ahead and close public comment on Zoom, and we'll come back to the first item of the day. We are covering our public hearing 24-572, Specific Plan Amendment 2023-002, and the request to amend the Gateway Center's specific plan to allow vehicle washing subject to a conditional use permit and other related amendments. And we will receive a report from Courtney Grossman, our planning manager. Welcome.
Am I on? Okay, great. Okay, in terms of executive summary, Vance Shannon, on behalf of Quick Quack Car Wash, is requesting approval to construct a car wash known as vehicle washing as defined by the zoning code. The site is located in a specific plan area called Gateway Center Specific Plan. It was adopted in 2011, and it restricts vehicle washing as an accessory use, not as a primary use, as in this case. Therefore, the project requires consideration of an amendment to the specific plan. There's four key elements to the plan amendment. One of them is to change the specific plan to allow vehicle washing as a primary use subject to a CUP, or a conditional use permit. The second is to allow a consideration of less... The second is to allow a consideration of less parking, which is known as a parking reduction. In this case, 12 spaces are required, three are proposed. This equates to approximately a 75% parking reduction. There is a request in design to shift the building away from the street. In other words, not facing the roadway, but it's more shifted to the interior of the site. And there are some modifications to the driveways in order to accommodate the circulation of the car wash, and we'll get into those details next. Back in September 18, the Planning Commission considered this item and recommended that council approve the plan amendment and the CUP. This slide here shows the developed shopping center, and I'm not sure where the laser is. That's not it. That's not it. There it is. This is the primary tenant, the first tenant that was constructed, which is the Lowe's building. Right over here is Foster Freeze, that's the second tenant. This area and this area are both vacant. The project is to be built approximately in this location, which would be the car wash. This site is located in what is known as the future growth area. The future growth area is a part of the city that is for planned development. There's a number of future growth areas in the city. This one happens to be what we call the north of Beronda Road Future Growth Area. This specific plan that we're looking at for amending used to be part of the West Area Specific Plan, but was broken off into a smaller plan, which was later renamed the Gateway Center Specific Plan. When the anchor tenant Lowe's constructed in 2018, it included some site improvements for frontage and pedestrian connections and right-of-way improvements. The Foster Freeze project was constructed in 2020. This diagram shows the West Area Specific Plan. And this location is the part that was broken off, which is known as the Gateway Center. This plan was based on what they call the principles of what we call walkable community, smart growth, and whatnot. You'll notice that the plan includes some center city areas, lineal parks. It's a planned neighborhood so that walkable communities can happen in this, in this design. Couple key things about that. Behind the Lowe's, there's a walkway that's planned here, a connection. There's a approximately three-acre neighborhood park right here, and there are walkways along the drainage basin that connect into the shopping center. This is a diagram from the Gateway Specific Plan. It's known as Figure 1.3. This is the Lowe's building. Here's the Foster Freeze, the drainage basin. It's hard to tell because of the detail here, but this is one of the walkways that goes along here as well, down to here. This is the, the site that we're going to get into the details now. This is one of the driveway entrances, and this is one of the driveways that needs to be modified for this project to go forward. In terms of analysis, as mentioned earlier, it was based on pedestrian activity and natural surveillance. A couple of the changes to the plan that need to happen are to modify the interior driveways and shift the building. For the applicant, these changes are necessary in order for the project to go forward. In more detail, what's happening at this location where you come off of the, the main Beronda Road, there's a driveway connection here, which would serve the retail services building that was part of the conceptual plans. This is going to be replaced, or proposed to be replaced with the car wash building. The car wash will have a queuing site, which is actually shown right here. So you have three lanes of cars coming in here. They will circulate down, go through the wash tunnel, and then enter into the do-it-yourself vacuum area. This driveway connection would be deleted. And that was the shift in the building area, actually, in terms of orientation. Normally, the building would be oriented with the alignment of the road and parallel to Beronda, but in this case, it's going this way for the circulation, which is required by the applicant in order for this project to go forward. More analysis, getting into the details of the parking. The specific plan includes a calculation of 1.292 square feet of stalls space for the floor area to parking ratio. The zoning code typically requires one per 250. In this case, 12 spaces would be required. This calculates to a 75% reduction. The applicant indicates that there will be two to three employees, and the parking supply would not be overwhelmed by demand. More analysis. The driveway that we spoke about that would be closed is required for this project. There is a standard of 24 feet. In this case, it's 44 feet wide. One-way driveways and two-way driveways, apparently by the zoning code, max out at 24. So this is a little bit of a shift from standard. But for this type of design, in order to prevent what we call queuing or stacking, we don't want the cars to conflict with the internal drive aisles. So a three-wide drive aisle is necessary in order to make sure that the circulation for this business doesn't impact the other parts of the shopping center. More details of the changes. This area indicates the part that turns into the driveway with three stalls. There's the X, and this is the circulation drawing from the specific plan. These are elements of the specific plan that would be modified with this amendment. These are the drawings of the proposal. The design standards have been reviewed against the requirements in the specific plan. The plans have been deemed conforming in terms of design. You'll notice there's red tiled roofs and stucco and colors that are compatible with the shopping center. In the case of the specific plan, these are the conceptual drawings that were looked at by the Planning Commission and the council when the specific plan went before those hearing bodies. This plan or these drawings would, would not happen with this project. In fact, they were never, ever part of the project. They were just shown as conceptual drawings to move forward. In terms of environmental review, there's basically two components here. The specific plan amendment is looking to be a exemption from CEQA. It's called 15305, and this deals with minor alterations and land use limitations. Also, the specific plan itself went through an environmental process called a mitigated negative declaration. For the construction of the project or the authorization of the actual project, the conditional use permit, it would be subject to a different CEQA exemption, 15332. I think it's a class 32. We call this the infill exemption. Finally, the recommendation. There's basically four steps that would happen here. In connection with the Planning Commission's recommendation in September 18, the city council is, or the, the staff recommendation to the city council is approval, and there's basically four steps. The first one is to find the specific plan amendment exempt and then approve the specific plan. The next step would be find the conditional use permit exempt and then approve the conditional use permit. All four steps. That concludes staff's presentation. Staffs available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we will go to council member questions first, then out to the public, and then we'll come back for final comment and action. I will start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela. Any questions?
No questions on this one. I had a pretty good conversation with our city manager.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. The staff report didn't mention there were any CEQA issues that came up, but I know that isn't the extent to environmental regulations we have to follow. My question is, how are we taking into consideration our storm drain needs and the, and what we're trying to do to be better in compliance with, with drainage requirements and all of our storm drain plans? How does this impact that? Are really, car washes something that we should really be continuing to support moving forward? What kind of environmental things have to be put into consideration for this?
Certainly. I'll try to answer that in two.
I'm so sorry. That was like 10 different questions. I just, my apologies.
The, the first step is the environmental review and the design of the shopping center. In, in, basically the water on the center goes into the drainage basin, which is off to the, kind of the east of the center. And what that does is it kind of holds the water. I'm not an engineer, but there is some filtration that would occur with that, and eventually that water would discharge once it reaches a certain elevation and passes through the, through the gate, so to speak. On the other end is more on the operations of the car wash. There is some recycling involved, and I would defer that to the applicant on exactly how that works. They have underground tanks and some pumps and filters and things like that.
Yeah, because it seems to be a heavy water operation, right? And, and we're not particularly in a environment where we have a lot of water, so I'm just thinking about how this translates to meeting our needs as the city continues to grow. In your planning experience, have you seen a lot of car washes put in a similar environment as this, or typically where do you see car washes built?
The last couple of car washes, I think there's like South Main is quite a little while ago. A lot of them have been the smaller ones that are more or less accessory to convenience stores. And, and back to the water use, I think the applicant has some really good numbers and processes on, on how that works and whether it's a big water user. I would leave that up to, to the applicant to discuss. But, but typically, these, these are highly recycled activities.
Do you think this is in alignment with best practices for, for how cities should continue to grow in terms of the, where it's placed? Or is this an outlier, do you think?
Well, my understanding from the applicant is these types of car washes actually lose or use less water than individuals who would use, say, a garden hose in front of their house.
Understood.
But I, I think I would defer that to the applicant as well.
Understood. All righty, those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Madam Mayor, would it be appropriate to hear from the applicant as well?
I will ask them in public comment to speak, so.
Mr. Grossman, thank you for your report, and I appreciate that the Planning Commission approved it. I know with you and Mr. Latino working on this project, is it something that you feel, something that would, the environment would be fine, investments great, and you feel like, you feel pretty positive about this project?
Well, the Planning Commission consideration went to the Planning Commission without a recommendation. There was a policy question to be looked at, whether this was in line with the pedestrian activity of the particular center. We do have a Lowe's. It's not necessarily pedestrian-related. We do have trails and walkways that go into the center, but the bigger question is, how does that really work? Can people walk into the Lowe's and purchase small items and, and walk them back to their house? Of course. Are they going to carry concrete with them or large, you know, pallets full of concrete blocks? Probably not. Same thing with some of the drive-through kind of related businesses. In other words, the car wash and the, the existing car, or sorry, drive-through oriented fast food restaurant. So the drive-through nature of this was a little bit of a policy question, but in general, this center has not really turned into a pedestrian, you know, activity-type center. So there are other opportunities in the specific plan that have parks and more kind of central downtown design kind of attributes that, that may lend itself better to more walkable-style, you know, activity centers. This center, given its location, arterial roadway is right across the street from another heavily car-oriented development, maybe this isn't exactly the right spot. And I think it's what the Planning Commission chose when they recommended approval to the council.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Osorio, questions?
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Right, nor do I. So I will go ahead and take it out to the public. I understand the applicant is here. I caught wind late after I started public comment, and I tried to stay consistent with everybody, so I'm giving two minutes per person, but I believe there's two of you here. So if you want to tag team for four, that falls within my strict rule of making sure that everybody has equal time limits for speaking. So you're welcome to come on up, and then we'll go ahead and open public comment after that to anyone that wishes to comment on this.
Thank you. My name is Vance Shannon. Good evening, council and mayor. I want to address your question, Councilman Rocha, and really kind of along the lines of your question as well. The EPA highly recommends using an express-type car wash. We recycle all of the water that we use, except for maybe that little bit that drips off the car as it exits the wash. Even that is drained back into the wash, goes into a central trench. That central trench goes into three 1,500-gallon reclamation tanks. The bottom line is, we use that water over and over again, and we're using about 25 to 28 gallons per car that goes through the wash. When you wash your car in the driveway, you can use as much as 150 gallons of water. And that's why the EPA highly recommends a professional car wash. In addition to that, the water that we use all goes into the sewer system after it's been treated. When you do it in your driveway, it goes into the, into the stormwater system, into the lakes and rivers and stuff. So a great question. It's a great solution to water conservation and environmental friendliness. All of our soaps are environmentally friendly, and, and, and so it's, it's a great product as far as that, that concern goes. Was there any other questions that I could answer?
It's your two minutes.
It's a great product. It's going to be a great addition. I think it'll bring more development into that area. It's been kind of slow in growing. I think that the landlords representative can speak to how long it's sat there without tenants, and, and we have 250 stores, 1.3 million members. We're a great operator. We've been doing it for a while and, and strive to be the best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. Any member of the public wish to comment?
Hi, Jose Guerra, Montebea community. We'd like to have one on our side of town. It'd be nice to begin with. Second of all, I don't know how, sometimes we get up here, we get all the data. These gentlemen that present it never have the correct data. And does he ever talk to the gentleman behind me? And do they get in a room and does he give them that information? It's a lot of confusion. It shouldn't be. When you come up here and you present something, you should know what you're going to do, what it's going to be. You should know the answers he just gave everybody. You should be able to do that. When these council members ask you a question, you should already know that. You guys got to prepare yourselves better. I don't know why they don't. That's my only thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, hi. I use a commercial car wash for the reasons that were presented. All of the information that I have in terms of water state that you should do it in a place where it's designated. Not only that, but many of our homes don't have soft water treatment, and you're not going to get the same finish as a car wash that actually is able to filter out. I can't wash my car in my house because I get these raindrops. The only thing that I would be concerned with is that if this were to drive up prices, then that is, you know, driving up inflation. So if this had a negative financial impact for our existing community, then that would be something that you want to take into consideration because the people that are washing their car and preserving water now do so because they can afford it. If prices change, they might not be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Name's Eric Peterson. The other day, the one on North Main near where I live had lines. There's a, there's a market. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comment, I'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back to council members for final comment and action. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
No, just thanks again for the presentation. And, you know, to the applicant's point, that is also the reason why I, I use the commercial car washes. So with that, I request to make a motion to.
Could you, could you repeat your motion?
Make the motion to amend the Gateway Center specific plan to allow vehicle washing subject to CUP.
And does the maker of the second agree?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion made by, yes.
Mayor, it should be a motion to approve the resolution so that we capture all of the four required approvals.
Motion to approve the resolution.
All right, and does the maker of the second agree?
Yes.
All right, so motion made by Councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Osorio. We'll go on for final comment. Councilmember Rocha.
Well, thank you for your presentation, and thank you to the applicant for the clarification. It's really important points that you raised, and overall, in the best interest of the environment for us to be recycling water. So happy to support the item. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Gonzalez, any final comments? Councilmember Barrera?
Well, I just want to say on the outside, we have a lot of self-wash where you can wash your cars, so hopefully you'll be looking at Aliso as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Osorio?
No, just happy to support. Thank you.
And I am too. So we'll go ahead and call for the vote on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Calling for the vote, approving a resolution for the conditional use permit. use permit. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval, absent. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sounds like we're going to have a quick crack car wash. Okay, on to the next item. Twenty-four dash six-one-one, Salinas United Business Association Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Assessment. And we have Crystal Cassius, our Community Development Analyst here to give the presentation. Before we start, my organization has a contract with SUBA. So while there's no monetary benefit to me, I'm choosing to recuse myself in an overabundance of caution. And we'll turn over the gavel to Mayor Protem Rocha.
Alrighty, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. On August 6th, City Council approved a resolution of intention to consider the annual levy of assessment for the Salinas United Business Association in the business improvement area. The resolution of intention was published in the Monterey County Weekly on August 22nd, at least seven days prior to this hearing. As part of the two-step process, it is recommended that the council open the hearing and consider oral and written testimony regarding the annual levy of assessment for fiscal year 2024-2025. No written protests were received, so the council may proceed to approve a resolution of confirming the SUBA annual report for fiscal year 2023-2024 and its proposed budget for 2024-2025, finalizing the levy of assessment. Here to answer any questions, as well as Alejandro Witsuba, the executive director of YAZUM.
Okay, thank you. And we will now start the public hearing. I believe that's how...
Councilmember questions first, and then we'll go to the public.
Alright, sounds good. We'll go to councilmember questions. We'll start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you for that. So I think just similar to previous questions. So the assessment district is basically to support SUBA. I know we had to levy taxes, correct? How enforceable is it? Like, how successful are we in levying those taxes?
How successful are we?
Does 100% of, you know, the businesses participate, or the owners?
So they are enforceable through the state. They are required to be paid. As of currently, I believe, the numbers were about like 60% that those assessments were collected, if I'm not wrong. About 60%.
60%. And what happens with the other 40% then?
So previously, they were sent to collections. The board decided not to proceed with that process anymore. It was hurting a lot of the business owners' credits. So they decided to not proceed with that procedure.
Understood. And do we have any programs that will support those businesses that might be, you know, not able to make the assessment, or that 40%?
So I'm not sure if the board has taken any decisions regarding that. And in terms of supporting them, they're still being considered as a member. So they are still able to get services or technical assistance if they need that.
Understood, yeah. We're just trying to balance that, you know, making sure that everybody pays their fair share, but at the same time, we don't want to punish businesses. So that's all questions.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll now move on to Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Barrera?
No questions.
Councilmember Osorio?
No questions.
Thank you. We're now going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to pass it on to our city clerk.
So no protests have been received for this hearing for the levy of the Salinas United Business Association for fiscal year 24-25 on the clerk's side. So Mayor Protem, I'll pass it back on to you for public comment.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to public comment. We'll start in the council chambers.
Hi, Jose Guerra Montevia community. I have a couple of questions. Again, like the first presentation, how come we don't have a number of what we're going to be paying out on this levy or this tax, or whatever you want to call it? How come no one does their homework when they come up here and they want to present something, and there's no numbers? I don't know. We don't know yet. I'm just kind of curious. That was it. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to comment in public comment? Seeing none in the council chambers, we'll go out to Zoom. We have one hand raised on Zoom, and it's from Alejandro Chavez. Alejandro, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and make your public comment.
So I just want to thank the board. I'm not seeing myself on here, but I just want to go ahead and let you, just to inform the council, that as far as the levies are concerned, it's based on a formula of 78% of what the business license cost is, up to a levy of $750. So the highest levy or assessment that a business will reach will be $750. And it's all based on a, on their license or their business license. In regards to the member of the public referring to a levy or a tax on someone, it's only on the businesses within the business improvement area. And that is the entire cost. So just wanted to make that comment too. And as far as the amount of assessments that were reached, we're right under 60% for this year. We reached really close to the 60%. When we became before the city council in August, we were at around 50%. So we've been able to close the gap a little bit and get higher on the assessments. But as both Councilmember Valenzuela referred to that fairness of how much we receive, we would love to receive a whole lot more. And it used to be a lot more when the city council or the city of Salinas sent the billing out. However, due to the decisions by our board, the decisions have been made to not put our businesses in that place of collections or going to a collection agency. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on public comment? I'm seeing no other hands raised. So at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the council for councilmember comments, and I'll start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
No other comments.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Are these comments, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, you know what? I appreciate the work that the merchants are doing. It's not easy. But you know what? For a long time, it was a very difficult association to work with. But, you know, thanks to Mr. Chavez, and even just by hearing that there is no merchants that are here to speak out against it. So I think they've done some great work. And with that, and to Mr. Guerra's point, I think the numbers are there, the reports are there. The thing is, this business association, and we can get those numbers as well from Mr. Alejandro Chavez. Is he an executive director? Is that his position, executive director? So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
And that is to approve a resolution to levy and collect the annual assessment in the Salinas United Business Association Business Improvement Area for fiscal year 2024-2025?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. So we'll move on to Councilmember Osorio for comment.
Yeah, I know we've seen SUBA come here, you know, every year. And we speak a little bit about the business community that finds the services that they're able to provide useful. One of the things that I would like to say is that I feel that there's a way that we can, as a city, support SUBA even more. I understand that while the last time they presented, they were able to collect about 50%, now they're up to 60%. I still find that that's still below the, below the amount of the percentage that they want to collect. So I think that if there's any way that the city of Salinas can support them more, to be able to collect, you know, 70, 80, 90, 5% or whatever it may be, I don't know how historically, how much they normally collect. But the Alisal and the merchants in the Alisal that are out on East Market, Sanborn and East Alisal, they're a huge contributor to our retail sales taxes that we're collecting here as a city. I see them as definitely an asset. So how can we greater support SUBA to be able to support those small businesses? So just wanted to leave that in my comments. So happy to support it going forward. Looking forward to being able to collect more of those fees from the merchants.
Thank you. And then do you accept the clarification of the motion as your second?
Yes.
Great. I have no comments on my end. Thank you for your work. And we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Calling for the vote on the SUBA levy. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rocha?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. We'll move on to our consideration items. We have twenty-four dash four-four-three, the Salinas Broadband Master Plan and Alisal Neighborhood Broadband Fiber Network Design. This is a report from Michael Gomez, our Economic Development Analyst, who will be introducing the consultant.
Good afternoon, council, city manager, city attorney. I'm pleased to be here with some progress. We were here last December to give a general update on broadband, and happy to say that we're here now to demonstrate that progress that will bridge the digital divide in broadband. So I'm here to please, not to present, but to introduce Joe Arroyo from Kimmy Horn, who was a crucial component of developing the Salinas Broadband Master Plan and the Alisal Fiber Design Network for the city of Salinas.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present. I'm excited to present the update to the Salinas Broadband Master Plan. Back in December, we gave you an update about where we were with the plan, and it was in the very early stages of development. So pleased to present where we left off. So the objectives of the plan were to establish a citywide fiber network that prioritizes underserved and unserved communities while supporting economic development. The broadband master plan will service a strategic framework to close the digital divide, enhance connectivity for residents, businesses, and government services, develop plans to upgrade broadband infrastructure, starting with the Alisal neighborhood, and also plan for future expansion citywide, considering some of the areas up north that have not yet been developed. As a reminder, this effort was accomplished through funding received from LADA, which is the local agency technical assistance program from CPUC. And this program required that we come up with a plan for broadband deployment in the entire city, and also stipulated for design plans to be developed for the Alisal neighborhood specifically. So part of the funding required that we also engage the community. And so here we have a brief timeline of various outreach elements that were accomplished as part of this plan. As you see up there, the December 2023 council update we gave to you all in December. And then we also got input from other stakeholders and community members throughout various portions of the development of the plan. The master plan contains the elements shown on the screen here. We started out with developing a comprehensive vision and introduction. We followed up with an existing conditions analysis and reviewing existing city policies that would support broadband deployment or potentially hinder it. Then we followed up with a needs assessment, figuring out where the gaps were in terms of the deployment. And that helped us to develop a citywide fiber network and the Alisal neighborhood public Wi-Fi network. And then we wrapped up with potential funding opportunities to construct this network in the future. As a reminder, the funding that we received did not allow us to use any of the money for design or for construction of anything outside of the Alisal neighborhood. So some of the existing conditions and policies that we took at, take a look at, were the Alisal Vibrancy and Chinatown Revitalization Plans for the goals, which outlined actions to improve internet accessibility. We took a look at the microtrenching standard and Dig One's policy to ease, to help with the implementation and ease of implementation of the broadband network, and other citywide policies like the Vision Salinas 2040 and the 2017 EDE to support the implementation of fiber. And a big portion of it was taking a look at existing city fiber assets. And so this figure here, it might be kind of hard to see, but it shows where we, the city currently has fiber. And it's more towards the south portion of the map and south portion of the city, if you can see there, along Sanborn and the Alisal neighborhood, and Romi Lane and Abbott Street, and more focused on the Alisal area. And as a reminder, I think a lot of this fiber is operated by third-party operators, but it's used for city use. And then the design that we developed for the Alisal neighborhood is shown here in the blue lines. We focused on deploying fiber along the main roads, Sanborn Market, Alisal, Del Monte, and Williams. Something you don't see in this map is we tried to connect to the airport and then other, other city facilities throughout the neighborhood, and also some traffic signals. Now, as it related to developing the network for the entire rest of the city, it was important to figure out how to prioritize this network. And so in order to develop the prioritization criteria, we got input from the Economic Development Department and Public Works Department and other city officials. And so we came up with a list of six criteria that you see here to better prioritize the potential projects that would be included in the broadband network. And a few of them are serving underserved communities, availability of broadband options, the ability to facilitate economic growth, connecting to public places, areas with high populations of students, and areas that support other city operations such as traffic signals and traffic operations. After we took a look at each of the projects, and maybe let me take a step back, we took a look at the entire city in terms of where we could deploy broadband. And in order to better align ourselves with potential funding sources out there, we had to break the projects down into segments that were one to three miles, because there's not any public, or any funding source that will fund something like 50 or 60 miles worth of fiber. And so we wanted to figure out how to break it out into small sections that could be built out throughout a specific period of time. And using the prioritization criteria, we ended up with the map that you see here. And it's important to note that some of the higher priority areas are adjacent to the Alisal neighborhood. I don't know if this is the way to use this. Oh, here it is. Yeah, so if you see, Project One is right adjacent to the Alisal neighborhood. And the reason for that is that there's existing fiber assets at the public, the police headquarters. And if you see some of the areas up north that have yet to be developed are closer to the bottom of the prioritization list. And everything else sort of builds out from the Alisal neighborhood out. Another element of the project and, or the master plan was to figure out how quickly or how slowly we could implement some of the broadband out there. And that helped us to figure out how to prioritize the funding should it become available. So we had three different categories of time. We had short-term, medium-term, and long-term opportunities. And so as I mentioned in the previous slide, the short-term is building upon Decor and Trunkline Foundation's, the Alisal neighborhood area. And it has areas that are high priority, that are able to connect well with upcoming projects, and that are really highly positioned for upcoming funding opportunities. Where in contrast, the long-term, the long-term implementation timeframe, as I mentioned, are areas in the outskirts of the city where it would take more connection pieces to be able to include that within the citywide network. And so considering the way that we prioritize the projects and then looking at the implementation timelines, we ended up with a map that you see here, where the highest priority or the short-term projects are the ones in blue. And if you see here, these projects were surrounding the stretch of road that connects directly to the Alisal area here and goes up to the north of the city. Everything else sort of builds outside of that. The medium-term are the ones shown in yellow here that are essentially add-ons to the short-term projects. And then in gray, which actually is a little bit red-looking in this figure, are areas that don't necessarily tie that closely together with the medium and short-term projects. A quick summary of the projects that we came up with. I mentioned earlier, we have a total of 51, 55.1 miles of broadband identified. The Alisal neighborhood... The Alisal Neighborhood length is ten point two miles. There are a total number of thirty-two projects. The average cost of the project within the broadband master plan is around a million dollars. There are some that are five hundred thousand and there are some that are up to five million. And to deploy the entire citywide network, it would cost around sixty-two million dollars. As part of the master plan, there was also a stipulation to consider deploying Wi-Fi. And so the way that we went about figuring out which places to deploy Wi-Fi at were looking at schools, traffic signal infrastructure and parks. The traffic signal infrastructure was looked at because that is an easy place to place equipment to support Wi-Fi deployment in large public areas. And so, as I mentioned, we looked at four particular areas for access points to the Wi-Fi network because you have to essentially connect to a hard-wired location. So we looked at buildings, traffic signals that were next to or near the area, which would require some fiber or broadband deployment to connect, and adding new infrastructure such as conduit. To deploy the public Wi-Fi network, the total cost was around three point four million dollars. And in the Alisal Neighborhood, it was three hundred thousand. So considering that we have developed this plan, that the projects are nicely outlined in, our next steps are to focus on finding funding sources that will allow us to build out these projects. As I mentioned, the pub the funding source that we use for the project only allowed us to do the planning level, the planning level research and organization of the projects. And there are currently a lot of local, state and federal funding opportunities that are supporting the deployment of broadband. Another option to look at always is a private-public partnership where you have somebody who comes in and builds out the network and you have different things that you outline as far as how the network is going to be used. And there are other regional partnerships that are being considered right now. Monterey County has a broadband master plan that considered the broadband master plan that we developed for Salinas as a way to partner together on deployment. As far as the recommended actions, we recommend to a to approve a resolution to adopt the Salinas Broadband Master Plan as a key strategic planning document and accept a resolution approving the Alisal Neighborhood Fiber Network Design. And that is it. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. I will start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela. Questions?
Yeah, I know that today is only about approving the plan, right? So hopefully, community members know that we, you know, it's not absolute yet. But do we have any specific leads for funding sources?
We have a couple of funding sources. BEAT is one of the ones that's upcoming. I think it's potentially being impacted by our upcoming presidential election. So those are some of the things that we have to consider. But we have been keeping our eye out and we're working with the Economic Development Department and the IT Department to find other funding sources currently or planning to in the future.
Understood. And I think already here it's allocated for like a ten percent contingency, right? Things going up in price?
Yes. Yeah, no, the the planning level costs were very planning level. I think we used the way that we did it was considering how much it would take to deploy the broadband network using a one-mile segment. And then we extrapolated the cost for whatever length of that project was. Because it's hard to determine how much conduit, how many pole boxes and how many different connections you need to have at this kind of scale.
Understood. And just given the importance of this, is there a sense of urgency? Like this plan will only be good for X amount of years, otherwise we have to do another plan?
In the actual plan, we recommend that the that we take a look at it every few years. I think maybe if you considered the landscape of broadband five to ten years ago, funding opportunities were far and few in between. And right now, it seems like funding opportunities are coming up annually. And so it's important to stay on top of the available funding sources so that we can actually start to build out this network.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Well, I'm really excited to have the plan. I think that it's really important to have a roadmap for how we move forward. What I would share with my colleagues, it's going to be critical for us every year to put aside money for this project, no matter how much the money it is. But just to make those inroads, I think about this very similarly to the Beronda Road Congestion Relief Project. When I got in the city council, there was about twelve million dollars set aside during that timeframe. We were able to get it up to twenty, can now start construction very soon. But it's through that consistent investment, really, it's only where you're going to go. Because there also is just a, as my colleague Barrera would say, another plan sitting on a shelf collecting dust. And we don't want that to happen. So thank you for your work. Happy to support it. And I think that we have a strong ally in the Speaker of the State Assembly, who is a representative, who will help us on this. So thank you for your work, Council.
Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Okay, Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Yes, excuse me. I'd like to ask our Economic Development, I know it's a question, Mr. Gomez. I know I keep hearing from people that we we don't have economic development, but it sounds like you're the person in charge here as far as economics. Mr. Gomez, we've been at this for quite some time now, years. I still remember Andy when he brought it for it. Realistically, I know we were looking at designs, we're looking at, and it's all great. You know, and and I'm going to get to my question, but sometimes what bothers me is when we hear underserved communities. And you know, the Alisal neighborhoods, it is rich. There's money out there, but a lot of times we're considered that we're the poor population. But where it's underserved is that we're taking a long time. And I know I hear we're looking for funding. But when do you think realistically some movement, some real movement will start happening out there?
That's a great question. I think it's just the the timing of the grants, what the availability is. And like Councilmember Rocha mentioned, if there's funding that can be set aside to maybe start that moving forward, at least to start a small segment, even if it's a mile. I think it starts with us if we have that funding available, just to put it to the side and start rolling it forward. But for the most part, it's going to be, you know, getting that grant money or partnering with that private partnership that's going to allow us to expand at a quicker pace.
Yeah, and you know what? I know when we hear a number throughout the entire city, well, it's a daunting number. Well, probably chances are we'll never get there. But then I see three hundred thousand dollars somewhere and I say, why don't we just start focusing on something and get it done?
Yeah, so that three hundred thousand dollars is just for the Wi-Fi, but you have to have the network set up first.
Yes.
But I mean, there there is progress. It is slowly moving because you need the capital. But I do see it moving quicker now that we have this plan here because we're at an advantage now where we have a plan that we can demonstrate to to folks, to private partners and or the public to this commission to obtain those grants.
Yeah, you know, my last question as far as funding, we hear partnerships. Is there people within our valley? I mean, we hear agriculture, four, seven billion dollar industries. Is there anywhere that we're tapping into our local partners to make something like this happen as well?
Yeah, so our our IT manager has reached out to some private. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Hey, Carlos.
Good evening, Carlos Ortega, IT Manager. Yes, we are absolutely reaching out. You know, this is an excellent first step. Say this, we have the roadmap, we have a plan and we are actively reaching out to other agencies. A lot of it is public engagement as well and bringing, you know, getting together as a community to explore those opportunities to actually start following through and building out this infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
I just wanted to add one more thing. Councilmember Barrera, the unserved and underserved is referring to internet availability and speed. I think we discussed this a little bit in December, too. So it sounds like we're talking about the economic portion of the residents, but it's all about the internet.
I appreciate the careful teasing there. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilmember Osorio, questions?
Yes, and my question is going to be for the city ma- city manager. So this is the first step, getting the plan approved. But how do you see, and we heard about a lot of different, a lot of the upside to to creating the plan and then putting something together. But but if you can talk a little bit to how this will directly benefit the folks in the Alisal? And then secondly, how you see maybe some of the experience that you have of how this can be successful here in Salinas?
So to the mayor and council, a few things. I think part, one of the benefits of having a plan is we now have a, if you approve it, we will now have a direction. So in one of our public speakers, there was one of the private partners that we would engage now with some real ability to kind of what are our next steps? And where can they connect and help? As you, if you read the plan, this is going to be a multi-approach. It's going to be broadband, it's going to be wireless, it's going to be a bunch of things to sort of make it work. So I think, one, the plan helps drive our direction. Number two, it helps us seek out the partners that are willing to engage with us in the vision that this council sets for your community as it pertains to broadband. That's very important. So one of the challenges I think the cities have is when you don't have a vision or direction, you're kind of just reaching. What are you presenting? What are you selling? How are you engaging the partners to meet the vision that you set for your city? So I think that's real key. Number three, it gives staff direction to pursue the right partnerships. South County, for example, went on a community broadband approach. Smaller cities coming together to kind of tap into grant funds to build the system that they'll be able to present now to their communities. This allows that kind of opportunity, other opportunities. It also helps us frankly talk to the providers, whether it's broadband, whether it's wireless, whether it's the phone companies. There's a lot of programs out there, but if you don't have a direction, it's hard to kind of see what fits your community. So it allows us to do that. And then finally, talked a lot about Beranda, talked a lot about some of the projects that are coming. As we're building out, now we have something, a roadmap. So as you're building out your community, this is how you're wiring the streets, just the expectations that you have. So that it sets the foundation for that. And then finally, it allows us to pursue funding. It allows us to work for the speak our speaker. It allows us to work for, next year, we're going to have a new senator, Senator Leir, with the redistricting. So it allows us to work with them. Clearly, the state budget is what the state budget is. Fiscally, the national elections are going to see kind of see what moves forward. But now we can actually shop this plan with the right grant opportunity. And I think one of the things that we are actually going to look at working with the council is bringing some more grant writing resources for the city. So right now, we have incredible staff that does an incredible job trying to pursue these opportunities in addition to everything else they're doing. So I think getting some grant support to help us sell this plant. Most of this is competitive. It's going to allow us now to bring it forward. And finally, when you talk about jobs, when you talk about promoting the community and the wellness of this community, this is a major, major step forward because now we can sell, now we can really shop and sell something. Part of that, everybody asks for our plan. Everyone, what's your direction? And we kind of try to make it up and piece it together. So we're not ready. Now we're ready. It's almost like we're, you know, shovel-ready because now we have a plan that we can bring forward.
Got it.
So.
That definitely answers my question. Thank you, City Manager. No further questions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, I'm David Masnev. So I'm a little ignorant of technology. So my question is, I have fiber optics going on the pole and it goes all the way to my house. But then when it gets connected up from the fiber optics to my house, it's wired. It's it's analog. And so it doesn't really, it's like taking a fire hose and trying to push it through a straw. My concern is, is that what we're doing here, trying to push? I mean, I don't know. So that's why I'm asking. So and I know you're not supposed to answer me, but anyway, it's a question.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Jose. I want to thank the mayor community. We are the forgotten side of the city. I mean, I'll be honest with you. There's not a lot of development out there. We don't have anything out there. It'd be nice to have this out there. Sixty-two million dollars is a lot of money. And that's just a an estimate. Next year will be, what, a hundred and ten? I mean, we don't know, eighty, ninety? So if we're going to do this, if you guys are going to vote for this today, let's make a decision where you're going to start first because we're making a bunch of assumptions. We're doing reports, but we're not designating one area to start first. Where are you going to start? We're going to do East Alisal, South Salinas, North Salinas? I mean, I really don't care where you do it. But if you're going to start taking money and and getting into this, you should start taxing, you know, no disrespect, but you know, you got a lot of ag that would benefit from that? A lot of ag. You have AT&amp;T, you have Verizon, these big companies, they can come in and help. I mean, even the the new Quack, Quack Wash, have them donate some money for that. Everybody that comes in, Keynes that's coming in, it's supposed to be coming in this year, hasn't happened. Put some money down for that. I mean, there's a lot of way to get money. There's a lot of money out here. We have a lot in East Salinas, but we just, we're the forgotten side of the city. I mean, I hate to say, but that's true. Nothing ever, ever gets done adequately on time out there. But thank you for trying. I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Alejandro with Comcast. I first want to acknowledge council and the IT Department and the Economic Development Department for bringing this forward. I appreciate that the council acknowledges the need to expand fiber to downtown and to close the digital divide in the city. I've had a conversation with Michael and with Carlos and on behalf of Comcast, we are excited to continue the conversation. It is a lot of money, sixty-two billion dollars. I do also recommend that the city fund some of it. I know you said BEAT and looking at, say, in federal funding, it is tough, especially with the election, with the budget, as you mentioned, City Manager. So I just want to say that we're excited to continue the conversation and thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, I I appreciate the idea of the plan. And I believe that providing connectivity is a part of a plan. And if this plan does represent a providing of services to underprivileged communities, the full vision of the plan is not just the connection, but also the ability to use the internet. If I'm in a wireless community, but I have no computer, it doesn't benefit me. So working with the Alisal School District, working with the school district that represent underprivileged children and connecting this portion of a plan, this incomplete plan to the resources that are required to use it would be great. So hundred-dollar laptops. I had a child in college. I paid two thousand dollars for a computer. It broke. I gave her a hundred-dollar laptop and she was able to use that. So you can do a lot with a very inexpensive computer. So the full vision, the full plan is the actual usage of the service, not just the provision of the service. The other thing is, is that what my partner brought up is the fact this is that you're going to be dealing with inflation, right? And if you are going to commit, you're going to want to do it now when it costs a dollar, rather when it's going to cost a dollar fifty. And with our economy, the way that it is, committing or being able to find a way to buy in and lock in the price of the service may keep you from having to double your feet. A complete plan includes the service and the tools that it takes to use this. And we want to target our underprivileged communities, children that are going to school, that to educate themselves and go to Hartnell and get colleges and sit with you on your board if they wish. Cool?
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in the rotunda, I will go ahead and close public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will come back to councilmembers for final comment and action. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
I'm just very excited about this project. And I agree, you know, let's start finding the money now. I'm sure we can find a lot of groups that have a lot of money that can help with connectivity and having good positive information. Mayor, given that it's consideration, is this subject to approval or motion?
It is. We have two resolutions to approve, the Salinas Broadband Master Plan as well as the Alisal Broadband Fiber Design Plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. I gave my my comment during my question. Have you made a motion already? I'll move the item for approval. Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Osorio on both resolutions, correct? Excellent. Thank you. Any final comments? All right, Councilmember Gonzalez, final comments?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, many of you know that I teach. I teach at Alisal High School. And it's it's very much in recent memory when COVID hit and we had to do fully remote teaching and we were fully online. And I can't tell you how difficult it was to have certain conversations with students who would, you know, have to be with mom and dad in the parking lot of a Starbucks or McDonald's. It was all over the newspaper, that image of the two young girls that were outside the Taco Bell. And since COVID, most, if not all educators that I know, certainly at our school site, have just converted to online. Everything's on Google Classroom. Everything is to be done digitally within our school district. We're one-to-one, so each student receives a Chromebook to take home. So I'm I'm. So I'm really excited about this project and its potential to really change lives and to really bring about closing to that digital divide. And I would be in support of starting in the Alasal. If the attempt is to close that digital divide, I think targeting an area where it is the most underserved would be the best option. Thank you.
Councilmember, for our final comments.
Thank you. I want to thank all the, there's a bunch of people on this report, so thank you. Mr. Gomez, I'm just very proud of your work. I sincerely, I am. And I'm thanking you for your presentation. And you know what? It's great to have these conversations, but every now and then it's, hopefully something will get done. And it's difficult, but sometimes when we go out to, and I want to thank the Alasal Vibrancy Plan as well. There was a lot of community meetings regarding this matter and other issues. And you know, when there's expectancy, here, all we have is our word. We put something out there, people are expecting for us to follow it too. So I would, I would ask later on with this, I would like to put a meeting together, being that there was a lot of people involved in this, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Carlos Ortega and whoever else. I would like to get out there and present it again and let the people know where we're at, what we're doing. Because I think it's important to give them an update. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Councilmember Osorio, final comments?
Thank you for the presentation and just happy to support. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. And we have a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. On to twenty-four-six hundred, the ordinance amending section twenty-eight fourteen of the Salinas Municipal Code related to general regulations governing the use of parks, recreation areas, and facilities. And we have Kristin Lundquist, our Library and Community Services Director, here to give the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As mentioned, the item before you this evening is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight dash fourteen of the Salinas Municipal Code. Chapter twenty-eight was established in nineteen fifty-six to govern the use of recreation and park services in the city of Salinas. Since that time, it's been updated as needed to address emerging issues relating to operations of the Rec Park Department. In an effort to address some concerns regarding the use of parking lots at various recreation park facilities and use of parks for campaign-related activities, staff is recommending this update to the Salinas Municipal Code. In addition to those two items, there's also a few non-substantive updates as well. This item was presented to the Library and Community Services Commission on September eleventh. The commission raised some concerns and ultimately tabled the item so that staff could do additional work. We received additional feedback from the commission and those recommendations were worked in to the draft that's before you this evening. The Library and Community Services Commission was scheduled to consider this item again on October ninth, however, did not meet due to a lack of quorum. So we're here before you this evening, asking the council to adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight dash fourteen of the Salinas Municipal Code related to the general regulations governing the use of parks, recreation areas, and facilities. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. We'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
No questions.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha?
I have a question on the parking lot, tow away. I think that every neighborhood has different needs and some neighborhoods may really, you know, for example, Montevilla wants the gates closed. In my district, actually, there has been a request to have the gates opened due to the lack of parking that exists on Calaveras. So just to point out that, to the best of our abilities, to be sensitive to the requests of the neighborhood, because there are some longstanding planning issues that we are now having to deal with that I don't think were considered sixty years ago as communities are being built out. So just some sensitivity around that. But a question for you is how is, how have you incorporated the concerns of the Library and Community Services Commission? Are all of them fully reflected in the document?
They are in some form or fashion, maybe not in the exact manner in which the commissioner suggested, but their comments and concerns were addressed in this ordinance.
And then back to my previous point, do you anticipate that you'll need to lean heavily into the towing part of it? Or what was the thought process around that?
So I think we need guidelines around use of all of our facilities. I think the intent is we would utilize these guidelines to address areas of concern that come up, not necessarily a uniformed enforcement for everything, but we need them in order to address significant issues that come up. And then we would work with our police department partners to address those or code enforcement or however that may work.
Thank you. That was an only question for you. And then I have a question for the city attorney on the campaigning provision of it. Can you clarify what you mean by equally available to all candidates? The only reason I bring that up is because it's been rather unique to me that in our city, we have the provision that you can't have campaign events at parks. I mean, I think of cities all across the state too, where candidates have campaign events at a park and people come and meet them and eat, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers or whatever that may be. And so I'm trying to understand that part of it.
So council member, in my opinion, the public parks are public forum for, in which campaign activity occurs quite frequently. The recommended changes you have in this ordinance here are with respect to the signage and to make it consistent with the other sign provisions in our zoning code.
Will this now allow for candidates to host events if they choose? Because I know that became an issue in twenty-twenty-two.
It does not prohibit them, council members.
It is not prohibited?
It does not prohibit them from having those activities.
Okay, understood. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Mr. City Attorney, what'd you say doesn't prohibit what?
His question was whether or not the ordinance would prohibit campaign activity in the parks. And my response was no, it does not prohibit it.
Yeah. You know, my concern has always been about Ms. Lundquist's consistency with enforcement. I just went on a ride along and I would ask questions to the officer on certain things that I believe were neighborhood priorities, but to the police department, they're not. With good reason, and there was good conversation. But you mentioned the police department. How do you, how do you think the police department is going to respond to this when they say they're either short-staffed or really that's not a priority? How are you going to deal with enforcing it?
So I think we will sit down between the police department and our department and talk those things through. If there is no need for towing, then there's no need to enforce it. So I think it really becomes a case-by-case basis. And when we have a problem or a particular park, parking lot that has an issue, then we would work to find solutions on how we would collaborate together to enforce it.
Yeah, and you know what? And I agree with you. I guess I wasn't thinking about towing. I was thinking more about, I'm thinking about the Firehouse Recreation Center. You know, we have a lot of apartments out there and, but then I saw a couple of men using it as a place to do mechanical work. And then they put oil all over the parking lot and you ask them politely, could you please clean after yourself? And they get upset. So those are my concerns. So here we're hearing from Montevilla and we're having a concern about we're not locking the gate or... So yeah, I guess when we approve something here and then we don't really follow through and are consistent, depending on the need of each neighborhood, that's what my biggest concern is. So you think with the partnerships that you have within the city, you'll be able to have success in that?
Absolutely. And just to clarify, we are part, we are locking the gates at Montevilla every night and that's been successful.
Okay, great. But, thank you.
Councilmember Osorio, questions?
Yes. I just wanted to share, I have the same concern that Councilmember Rocha has. I know that one of the gates, I don't believe is listed here, but it would be the area of Hebron and Fremont Street where the new Hebron Heights Community Center will be located. If you go there now, there's, there's no parking anywhere on that street. There's cars that are double parked. And knowing that sometimes, again, what works for one neighborhood may not work for the other and at the same, by the same token, if they're not, they're not, they don't have permission to be there overnight, of course, but I, I guess that would just be my only concern about approving this now for the simple fact that I just want to make sure, will, will there be some flexibility? I know this is questions, right? But will there be flexibility? I mean, passing this today would obviously give us those guidelines and making it very clear for us to be able to enforce. But do you see this being like very rigid and, you know, it's, this is what it is and this is the ordinance? How do you see a neighborhood like the Hebron and Fremont neighborhood, obviously different from, again, the Montevilla neighborhood? Can you speak a little bit to how you plan on maybe kind of addressing each individual need of a neighborhood?
Sure. I, I think this does give flexibility. It's a, it's another tool in our toolbox to address neighborhood concerns. We have had in the past, prior to demoing the Hebron Family Center, we had a lot of issues in that parking lot from drug sale, drug dealing to car, automotive-type stuff. And it's important for us to protect those amenities so that the programmatic pieces and the residents that are coming to the facility have access for those, those programs and activities. So the new Hebron Family Center has gates on that parking lot for that same reason, to help us address any of those concerns if they come back once we open a new facility.
Okay. Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back. Councilmember Sandoval, do you have any questions on this item?
No.
Okay, we'll go out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Hi, good evening. Jose Guerra, Montevilla Community. My concern is this, I live by the park, so it affects me. A lot of you gentlemen don't live by the park, don't even live in the area by the park, so this doesn't affect you. You don't see what we see. You don't get the phone calls at five-thirty, ten-thirty, eleven-thirty, hey, there's someone in the park having a barbecue. I sent you guys videos of people doing that, camping out overnight. We have no camping policy at our park. We love it like that, leave it like that. We want them locked every night. If there's cars in there, tow them. That brings more, more revenue to the city. And if, the people that go there don't even live there. There are people that are going out there to escape, to do what they need to do, you know, diligently, illegally, doing stuff they're not supposed to out there. So if you live by a park, you would know. If you don't live by the park, then you wouldn't know what's going on until somebody tells you. Well, I'm a block away from the park, so I know what happens every night. And God bless Ms. Lundquist, she's trying to lock the gates every night, but sometimes it's nine o'clock, nine-thirty. Sometimes it's too late. Some of the people, you can't get them out of there. So I would enforce for those cars to be towed and at the owner's expense, and that would be more revenue for you guys. Make some money. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Yeah, I really see this as a celebration. There used to be a lot of conflict, a lot of feeling as if our needs were not understood. Kristin has worked diligently to try to push our stuff forward. For a lot of time, we thought that, you know, she was kind of against us. And she's worked through that. She's worked through the difficulties of not being able to push our agenda forward and her solution is intelligent. I believe that you believe in her and that the belief in her proposal, you know, can be supported this evening. We are the community of Montevilla. We're more concerned with the safety of our community than parking. Many of the parking issues has to deal with people that are using the park that aren't from the community. If the park is to be, you know, something where you want to provide services to people outside of the community, then maybe paying for the maintenance of the park yourselves will allow for you to do what you want to in a way we're not paying for those services. But again, on the positive side, this represents collaboration and we're much appreciative of your ability to navigate all this stuff and to propose something that benefits our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Antonio Rabago of Montebella. I like to remind Mr. Barrera of a phrase he told me when I started dealing with our representative. He said, "Mr. Rabago, you don't understand how government works. It takes time. It takes a lot of time." I said, "Okay." So fifteen years gone by and here we are. I think that's enough time. We don't have no parking signs. We don't have this, we don't have that. One of the excuses that was brought up to our attention, that how about the poor people that can't pay a towing fee? Well, they shouldn't be driving. I mean, I don't want to sound unsympathetic, but if you go to a park where there's no parking and you park, it's not my responsibility. It's the people that go there without any due caution and do as they please. Just take that into consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment in the rotunda. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item on Zoom? If so, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back to council members for final comment and action. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
No, just first of all, thank you for, for the presentation. Just like anything, before we roll this out, if approved, just have a, you know, a public outreach campaign, especially to communities around the parks listed here. But besides that, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a, okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution.
Advocation, it's a motion to adopt an ordinance.
Okay, making a motion to adopt an ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the second maker of the motion accept that?
It's taken me fifteen years.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance by Councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Barrera. We'll go on for final comment. Councilmember Rocha?
Well, you know, I appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate the advocacy. Salinas is a very diverse community and with very diverse needs. Montevilla has very specific needs that you have consistently raised. Our representative district has very diverse needs as well. And so the concerns that I've heard regarding parking are from the residents that directly live in front of a park. I mean, the residents on Calaveras, they're telling me cars are parking and blocking my driveway because on Calaveras, they don't have really anywhere outside of a couple blocks of parking. And so people park literally right in front of someone's driveway and they can't even get out. So those issues have come up from the residents that live in front of the park and that's why they're bringing that up to me. And I think that what Councilor Osorio and myself have brought up was the need to have flexibility so that Montevilla can get exactly what they need, which I support, and other parts of the city can also have their needs met through this ordinance. And I think that that'll be accomplished, the collaborative approach. And I appreciate the residents of Montevilla have consistently raised their concerns. And hopefully this is a positive step for all of us in meeting all of our various needs. I know parking's been an issue in communities differently. Gates being open has been an issue. It's caused, because in some parts of my district, they don't want the gates open. They want them closed. In other parts, they want them open. So it's diverse needs all over the district. So happy to support this item and happy to support making progress on these longstanding neighborhood issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, final comment?
You know, I've been going to, I call it Las Casitas Park, not in the Toad Creek Park, but Las Casitas Park since I was a kid. Grew up on Ebanu, which is about two blocks from there. And I can't remember a time when that parking lot wasn't full. Then we expanded the parking out into where the dog park is. So I would like to echo the sentiments just across the need for parking. I know that up on Nogal, so many of those homes are built as single-family residences, but are not. There's multiple families living there. And you'll see that there, it's really hard to find a spot up and down Nogal. So I'm happy to support this and definitely wishing the best of luck to Kristin and her team in finding an approach that fits all. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Ms. Lundquist, I hope you appreciate this does, this council does support your efforts because it's not easy. A week ago, I was called to Paloma Avenue. Believe it or not, they were fighting for parking spots out on the street. I mean, it's gotten to the point where there's trash cans, there's, there's a trash can in this gentleman's district where they tied down tires to the trash can, so when they get off of work, they don't, it's hard. We have a lot of cars. We really do. We have a sincere issue here, a very serious one. Economics, you know, we talk about education. People just need to respect their neighbor. I mean, you just don't park in front of a driveway. No, it just happens. I mean, tonight, as we take a baby cruise down Alisal, you'll see some cars blocking the crosswalk. There's three people that are in a wheelchair, in their motorized wheelchair up and, up of tout, and they constantly tell me, "Tony, I can't get into, on the sidewalk." They gotta go on the side of the, of the street because there's, there's no, somebody blocked their ADA. People are disrespectful, and we know we're not supposed to do that, but we do it because there's nowhere else to park. But Ms. Lundquist, hopefully we'll find something. And we have some lawbreakers, and we do have a minimal amount of people that don't care. But other than that, people are expecting us to improve their neighborhoods. But consistency is critical. Talking about living around the park, I mean, Cluster Park says no parking around during night. It is filled with cars. Might as well either take down signs or enforce it. Thank you.
Councilmember Osornio, final comments?
Yeah, my comments are really just going to be so that our city attorney knows that I trust and respect his judgments, especially when we're putting together these ordinances here. And I hope Ms. Lundquist also knows that I completely support her department. I just, I do have concerns of the ordinance and, and again, I know that for us as a city and then being on this side, we have to make sure that we are creating safe places so that our residents could be, but also make sure that we're protecting the city from liabilities and things that might happen. So, unfortunately, I won't be supporting this item. I won't be voting yes on this item, but again, I just want to say that I respect the both of your guys' work, and I appreciate you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further comments, so we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Calling for the vote on item...
24-600.
24-600. My apologies. I'm trying to repeat the motion here, but so, we're adopting, motion made by Councilmember Valenzuela to adopt an ordinance amending section 28-14 of the Salinas Municipal Code related to the general regulations governing the use of parks, recreation areas, and facilities. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
No.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, on to 24-620, the amendments to the employee agreements with the city attorney, amendments to the compensation plans for department directors, confidential management, and confidential non-management. And we have Marina Horta-Gallagos, our human resources director, to give the presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, and all members of the city council. Consideration item 24620 includes two separate resolutions. The first resolution is a request for approval of an amendment to the city attorney's employment agreement, which extends his agreement out two years from February 2027 to February 2029. Mr. Callahan began his employment with the city of Salinas in 2003 and became the city attorney in 2014. The city council recently completed the performance evaluation for the city attorney, and the parties now seek to amend his employment agreement to extend the term again for a period of two years from February 2027 to 2029. The second resolution requests approval of the compensation plans for the department directors, the confidential management unit, and the confidential non-management unit. All three compensation plans provide for salary increases of 6% in January 2025 and 3% in January of 2026. The adjustment, the compensation plans also include adjustments to the employee and city contributions for health premiums and would seek to obtain parity with some of the other agreements and hope that these will help address recruitment and retention for these units. The department director's compensation plan also includes an adjustment for the chief of police and the public works director to address compaction for those two positions. Additionally, the department director's compensation plan addresses uniform allowance for the public safety positions and bringing that up to $100, essentially $100 a month. It also brings, proposes to bring deferred compensation contributions to the IRS-approved rates of 2024 and includes an increase in the ability to cash out annual leave balances, increasing the limit from 80 hours a year to 120. And with that, if the council has any questions?
Thank you. We'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela. Any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Rocha, questions? Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera? Councilmember Osornio? All right, out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Saw Mr. Peterson get antsy, so we'll wait. Welcome.
Good evening. No debating whether to talk or not. I am just hoping that, this is specifically regarding uniform allowances, that there are provisions where if something gets destroyed in the line of duty, the officer or person responsible for it doesn't have to buy a new one. And I'm thinking of an incident that happened some years ago where one of our police, who's no longer here, jumped into water, saved a life, and had to buy new boots, which aren't cheap. And I'm just hoping that sort of thing never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? If so, please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment on Zoom. We'll come back to council members for final comments and action. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
No other comments.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha?
I want to thank all of our hardworking city staff and our department directors who have really done so much in the last couple of years, more than really I think the city of Salinas ever thought we would be able to take on. Just the magnitude of the projects from things like the American Rescue Plan and massive capital projects for our city. So, just thank you all, and, you know, we really appreciate your hard work. This is our acknowledgement of our need to increase compensation, to make ourselves competitive in the market, but also truly to reflect our appreciation for our employees at every level in this organization. And a special thank you to our city attorney for his hard work. Happy to support an extension to your contract. It is a true benefit to our community to have you as our chief legal officer. Happy to move the item for approval.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. We'll go on for final comment. Councilmember Sandoval. Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Mr. Callahan, all heart.
Councilmember Osornio?
None done.
Oh, you're not done. I'm sorry. I apologize.
What's up with that? Mr. Callahan, I appreciate your work, and Osornio, I concur. You know what? There's a great staff here, and sometimes it feels like we might not agree on a lot of things, but we want to make, I hear the word retention. We want to make sure that employees do stay here and that they're valued, that they're important to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osornio?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Appreciate it. No other comments.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll just make the comment that, Chris, I have worked with you for now 14 years, and some of the department directors very much appreciate the professionalism and the dedication to the city. I mean, thank you. I've gone through four iterations of the city council. You've gone through many, many more, and appreciate the professionalism and the work that you do for our residents. With that, I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. On to an administrative report. So, there is no action on this item, council, but it is the city project dashboards and map. We have Sophia Rome here to give, our community relations manager, to give the presentation.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for allowing an opportunity to share some of the information about these tools to you as well as to our community. So, city projects and dashboard maps, it's something we've been talking about, sorry, project dashboards and project map is something that we've been talking about for a long time, especially as it relates to transparency, because part of transparency is making sure that we have collective information and information that's easy to find for our residents. So, the goals with these, implementing these tools, is to increase public access to information in a way that's easy to understand and digest. And then also, probably one of the more important things is to break down information silos, so having that information that is important to our community in one place for them to find. So, in May of 2024, we launched the transparency page on the city website, and there is, there are links and information that may be found on other parts of the website, like our open data portal and our records request, public records request platform. But again, it's just centralizing where everything lives. But I want to draw your attention to the project dashboards. So, we currently have two project dashboards and are working on expanding, expanding that to more. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the Alisal Vibrancy Plan Implementation Dashboard. So, when you click on that dashboard, it takes you to this homepage, and up at the very top, you'll see there are some dropdowns, and each of those dropdowns represent the goals in the Alisal Vibrancy Plan. And I do want to send, or I do want to mention that the community development team did an amazing job in putting this together and organizing all of the information. So, as you scroll further down on the homepage of the dashboard, you'll see where you can easily find how much progress we've made on Alisal Vibrancy Plan Implementation, and you see the budget breakdown for each of the goals. And then moving further down, you have our goals broken down again, this time in buttons with a project status, and you can see the specific goals and number references in the AVP. So, when you click on this, this is now going to drill down to another level, and this is going to show you, for instance, in this case, the budget allocated to the specific goal of appearance. And drilling down even further, these are the strategies that align with those goals. And when you click on those strategies, or a strategy in this case, you can see that this is where you drill down even further, where you look at the actual activities that are happening, that again, help us accomplish the overall goal with project updates. And then you can also see the progress on each of the activities, some in progress and some that have been completed. So, now, I'm going to transition to the project map. This is something that has been very exciting for us. So, there's a handful of projects on there. This is just the initial, the initial map that we're still working on internally, so it's not available to the public just yet because we want to make sure that we get as many projects on there as we can. But the goal is to really show you the level of work that's happening and providing information in a, in a centralized location where people can find what they need and what projects might impact them the most. So, at the top, there's a search, top of the map, there's a search bar where you can look at the neighborhood, so you can enter in your address if you want to know what's happening around you, or maybe along some roadwork, along your route that you travel or commute to get to work. But you can also, if you know the project that you're looking for, you can search by project name. And when you click on that project, you'll see that the green line shows up there, and that is, that identifies, in this case, where the Phase 1 of the Baronda Road project is happening. And then you'll see there's some information on there, like the status, how many dollars, a description of the project itself. You can scroll down further. You see council districts and then supporting information. So, if somebody wants to learn more other than what's described in the description, they can click that. And in this case, we've linked it to an article that we shared about the project. But taking us back to those dashboards, this is the opportunity for us to link those dashboards to projects that, that may have a dashboard available to them. So, I'm just going to go really quickly through these. These are just some examples of how the, how the project map can be used. So, this is, you'll see the pilot program area for the no parking on street sweeping days that the council recently approved, identified here. But in there, you also see there's another project, which is the Cluster Park project. So, what this helps on the city staff side with is we can see that these two projects overlap, and the timing of each of the projects, if you were to look at the descriptions, we probably need to do some targeted outreach there when it comes to the no parking implementation, but also the construction work that will be happening in Cluster Park. So, it's a great, easy visual to see where multiple projects that are unrelated overlap. But then also, at the community level, for somebody that maybe put their address in, they can see if they live around Cluster Park, hey, we might have some traffic impacts coming. Let me learn more, or let me contact the city to find out what I need to know. This is an example of a project within a project. So, sometimes we have a smaller project that's very important to our community that we might want to highlight separately. This is an example of a project that's been completed, some roadwork on San Juan Grade Road. Here's an example of a project that's a partnership, so it doesn't only have to be city projects. And this is a project that the city is not leading, but it has a high interest and impact to our community. So, we might want to share some information on there. So, talking about next steps, the, the first step is to continue to build out the project map and the dashboards, expanding the amount of information that's on there, but also establishing a process and a guideline to make sure that we're able to maintain these. So, it's not just a static website with outdated information, and to really work collaboratively and again, break down those information silos across departments. So, with that, I just want to thank you again for allowing the opportunity to share this with you and with the community.
Thank you. We'll start to my left, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, this is, this is amazing. Great job. I'm very excited to see this roll out. I know we use the word project a lot, but for our understanding, what are the, like, what do we define a project that will make it to this website?
So, I think that will be, we're going to work collaboratively with the executive team and the city manager, and I think one of the things that we have to consider is the impact to the community. Maybe it's a traffic impact. Maybe it's a long-term project. Maybe it's a multimillion-dollar project that's going to take 10 years to complete, like maybe Baronda Road. So, we have to take all of those things into consideration, but that's where establishing the processes and the guidelines is going to be really important. So, it's not going to be one-size-fits-all.
Perfect. And then is there going to be like an archive section to see what projects have been completed in my community in the past few years?
That's actually a really great question and consideration. So, we will be looking at doing different layers. So, that's really good feedback. So, thank you for that.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Yes. Will this be available in English and Spanish?
Yes, the, you'll be able to do the translation.
Wonderful. That was my only question. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera, questions?
Comments?
Questions.
All right.
Councilmember Osornio?
Are you done? Yeah. So, I kind of don't know how to phrase the question, but I mean, for this to be successful, you'd have to have every department really buy into this. I bring that up because this is obviously something new that we're going to be launching. I'm excited. I think it's great because when we're talking about projects, now we can literally give them a link and they can go and see all of the projects, right? So, it's really good. But, you know, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe in the city manager, but how can we, how will this become successful, especially when we just launched a brand-new web, our website looks nice and brand-new and everything? How do we see this being successful? It might be a challenge at first, maybe, but, you know, how do you see that? I don't know.
Great question. I think it's going to be successful with everybody working collaboratively to get it forward. So, part of the challenge here has been, how do you implement these types of projects and not make it just another thing to do, and not make it just something that's busy work? So, part of it is, can we bring some value to the project? So, GIS has been an integral... has been an integral part of this, because they have a lot of source data already. So how do we leverage the data information that we have already? And so the requests to departments are more fine-tuning, are more updates, and are really working through a sort of a communication strategy, just an approach. And so I think part of the trick is how do you do something which is just, is not too labor-intensive upfront? So that's number one. Number two is frankly, breaking down and trusting each other, trusting the information that flows back and forth, right? And it's not that departments, we don't trust each other, but it's just we're so focused on individual day-to-day activities. So how do we connect that so our day-to-day activities become just part of the greater investment that's going on in the community? I can tell you in my fourth short month here is, there's incredible energy and excitement in our departments. A lot of work's happening. But part of the other, I think part of one of our responsibilities, or my responsibility, is how do we create platforms that we can lift a little bit and pause? One of our directors today at our, at our department head meeting talked about, it's, it's an opportunity sometimes just to pause. And I don't think we do that enough. And when I'm pausing, I'm not thinking days or weeks, I'm thinking even 10 minutes. When you're so going, 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 it's incredible. So I think, in working with the communications team, you've resourced the communications team, just in a short time, we have more resource in the communications team than we had a few years ago, right? Because the council saw that as a priority. So how do we leverage that investment? How do we continue, one of the things that you just approved with the compensation plan or whatever, it sends another message to our workforce departments at all levels. And so I think that sort of validates the effort and the energy. So in the short answer to your question is, we just have to sort of build trust and use the information that we have. And it's important, working with our staff, to leverage it. GIS has an incredible, like David likes to remind me, there's an, there's an incredible source of data already in GIS. CED sets an incredible amount of data already. So how do we leverage that information? So I just think it's just a matter of time, but these little steps go a long way in validating that we're on the right approach, and getting the feedback, and us also bringing it back to the council. I'm thinking, you know, once we get the setup every quarter, we'll just have another update, here's kind of how things are going, even if it's a five-minute presentation. And that kind of validates and keeps it fresh. So it just becomes part of what we do. I like to say it was part of like, we don't think about, most of us thankfully breathe, we don't think about breathing. And so if it just becomes part of what we do, then it's, it outlives, it outlives the personalities. It just, so I think that's kind of what we want to strive for.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the answer. So, you know, obviously for me, it's, like I said, seeing some of the, the changes that are going to be going on, obviously in the Alice Al, there's so many projects. I do look forward to just seeing the, kind of how this unrolls, and I'm excited about that. So thank you.
Okay. We'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to pull this item? Hey, seeing none, I'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to pull this item? All right, seeing none, we'll come back to council members just to give final comments. There is no action. Councilmember Valenzuela?
No, just, great job. I'm very excited about this, because, you know, to the city manager's point, this not only informs the public about what we're doing, what the staff is doing, but it also creates that level of connectivity among departments. I think one of the hardest things about a city this large is, you know, one department starts a project, the normal finishes this, and maybe they, they don't talk to each other after that. This will create that reward mechanism. So, good job.
Councilmember Rocha, final comments?
Great work. I look forward to seeing it completely rolled out.
Councilmember Sandoval.
I mean, this is fantastic, not only for the council, as we are constantly seeking updates on projects, but for our constituents, because this will be a great place where we can direct folks to. So congratulations and thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Awesome work. I remember talking about this with the previous city manager, I don't know if it was a year or even two years ago, and just really excited to see it come to fruition. I think it's really going to help in terms of accountability, transparency, just the dissemination of information on our end. Really happy to see that it'll be available in English and Spanish. So really excited about this. Thank you, Sophia.
Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Thank you. Ms. Rome, you're a great asset to this organization. I mean that. And you know what I appreciate, is when I see individuals that acknowledge the work of other people. I appreciate that, because there's a lot of people here that are doing a lot of work, but we never hear about them. So thank you for acknowledging it. And you know, in thinking about your work with this dashboard, I'm looking at Carlos over there with IT. I met with him briefly, I think a couple of weeks ago, and how all your departments are, even though they're in the basement, they got a lot to do with these, with this, what you're doing now. And I think the part that, where you say, you use the word transparency, where people have access to their neighborhoods of what's happening there. Powerful. So thank you for that. Hopefully, when, when broadband comes to the Alice Al, we'll all be connected. Gracias.
Councilmember Sorneo, final comments?
For me as well, I do understand that when this is up and running, and it's, we start working out the kinks, because there will be some, and efficiency and all of that. I, you know, I wonder, with so many things going on, so many projects going on, I just wonder, you know, how those projects get prioritized and being in this list? Is it something that makes the list? Who decides how it goes on this list? Because, I mean, I'm excited, but let's be honest, it's going to, it's going to be some work. And while we want to tell the public that we're, we're doing all of these amazing projects, what if we, we don't want to tell, or what if we're not, what if the, the, the item isn't performing to what our standard is or something, right? Like, I mean, I think about those things. Those things are, are challenges. But I feel confident with, with you leading this project, and I feel confident with, with the passion that our city manager has to be able to broadcast how great all of his departments are doing. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Just a final comment on my end. When I was elected in 2011, we didn't even have Wi-Fi at City Hall. And that was 2011. I mean, yeah, no Wi-Fi at City Hall. So I feel like in the last 14 years, we have jumped over some major hurdles in terms of bringing forward the visibility and transparency, and also just modern-day technology into the city. I think we all can do our jobs better with that level of technology. I do want to point out that a few years ago, the GIS team won a silver award for Smart Cities Connect with Harvard Bloomberg, and they were featured as like, because of the open data portal that we had created. And I do think we should encourage the dialogue between Harvard Bloomberg and the city to maintain, they have resources and access to a lot of different programs and opportunities at no additional cost, that would, that would allow the city to continue forward in, in moving, moving forward with technology and certainly opportunities like this one. So I just think it's a great resource to use, and the city has, long before I even attended the program, was, was very involved in that. And I think it would be worthy for us to continue that. All right, we will deem that report received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something? You were inching towards the microphone.
I just wanted to say with the, please, real quickly, Sophie is working with, through ICMA, the International City County Management Association, on a, on a large national group when it comes to these efforts.
Right.
So, and then also Carlos is engaged in that. So we are engaged at, at that level, and she's, and Carlos are driving some of this. Just try to stay current.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. All right, we will go on to city council consent agenda. There are 13 items on consent. Just a reminder that ID 24-591, the rejection of bids for the Salinas Municipal Airport Taxi Lane Rehabilitation Project, has been tabled indefinitely. Would anyone like to pull an item for separate voter discussion? I'll start to my left. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, 24-573, 24-608.
Councilmember Rocha?
609.
Councilmember Sandoval?
609.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, in honor of the city manager, 573, 584, 609, and 614. That's all.
I'm sorry, councilmember, 573, 584, 6, what were the other two?
The other two was 609 and 614.
Councilmember Sorneo?
Yeah, 584, 609, please.
And I will reserve the comment on 609. I may or may not choose to exercise it. We'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on an item? Yes? Six, um, thank you. Yep. Anyone else? Yes?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Okay. Seeing no other hands, we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any items on consent? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'll need a motion to approve the remaining items. Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Sorneo, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez, on ID 621, 563, 565, 594, 599, and 607. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sorneo?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll go on to ID, we'll go by in order here, ID 612. Mr. Masonouv, you pulled this item?
Okay, so last meeting, I pulled this same thing, only it was for the previous month. This is the payment register for the city, and I'm, I just believe that you, there needs to be some changing to the way this is formatted. It tells you who you're paying, it doesn't tell you what you're paying for, and it doesn't tell you what department it is. So if you really want to be, you know, we're talking about transparency. So if we really want to be transparent, let's make it easy to understand. That's it. But this is the second time up here, so I'm keeping track for you.
Thank you. Excellent. Go ahead. A motion made by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Sorneo. Call for the vote on 612, please.
Councilmember Barrera? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Sorneo?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 573, we have Councilmember Valenzuela, you pulled this item?
Yes, first and foremost, I want to just thank the chief for a conversation that we had. I just wanted, for the public, I know that we are reallocating funds. Just for the public to know, what is CIP 9984 and CIP 9235?
Thanks for the question. Those are two CIPs that have to deal with station renovation dollars and our training tower project that was allocated to replace our aged training tower. We've gone through a lot of that process already, doing the background work, the mitigation work. It still needs to be done. It's still something that needs to be on our list, but it's still a little bit of a ways to go down the road a little bit. That's being redirected to get this priority project done.
That's good. And city manager, given that those are still projects that need to be done, are we going to be prepared and make the effort to get those into next year's budget?
We'll try to get them into the budget, yes. So the, the way it works for my CIP is, it's been put in there, so when staff brings back a real, a reallocation recommendation or request, that those CIP boxes don't drop off. We know we have to sort of try to get the funding for them. So we'll try.
Sounds good. That was my other question. Thank you for this, and we definitely want to support you.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Rocha. We'll go on to Councilmember Barrera for a final comment on this?
Yes, there's no doubt, I think it's important that we support the fire department. I mean, that's making sure the men and women there are, are safe as well, and the needs are being taken care of. And I want to, being that there are several of you here, I just want to thank you for your work. I sincerely mean that, and we're here to invest in the fire department. Thank you.
All right, call for the vote on 573, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Sorneo?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. 584, emergency Sherwood Hall HVAC control system replacement. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yes, I read the report, but I'm eager to hear, you know, I know there's, we've always had some issues with Sherwood Hall, but can somebody just share with us what this is going to do as far as the investing, or help us, help us out with this building?
I think, Kristin, can you help us out?
So we have had a variety of issues with the HVAC system out there, and there was a recent evaluation done by ESI, and their recommendation was to change the controller and upgrade the controls so that it goes to nomadic controls. And that's what this agreement is for.
Thank you.
Are you done, councilmember? Okay. I just wanted, didn't want to make any assumptions over here. Councilmember Sorneo, you also pulled this item?
Yes, thank you. And I'm not sure, I'll ask for the, I'll ask the question, I don't know if it's going to be for Department Head Lundquist or the city manager, but my only reserve on, on the HVAC system is that I know months ago, or at this point, years ago, we had had a presentation that was done of what we were going to be doing with the Sherwood Hall Center. There was three options presented to us. It was at a finance committee meeting, we got direction from the finance committee, and then I don't remember what happened to that item, but one of the items was, we sell it, we, we, we maintain it, or we lease it to somebody. And so I guess, for me, as we are making these, we're having these expenses, do we have an update on, on what, on what we're going to do, if it's going to come back into study? I only ask that because, again, if we're going to continue to make these investments, we want to make sure that we know what the future of this facility is looking like.
Certainly. So the city manager, we spoke about it this morning in a gender review, and I think in 2025, we can revisit that. You're, you're absolutely correct. It did come to the finance committee, and I think we've had a number of other priorities and things going on. And so we've talked about doing something and taking a look at the future for Sherwood Hall in 2025.
Okay. So for, for me, I, I don't, again, like I said, understanding that this is something that's needed, I feel that I can support it today, but I think that the broader conversation should be of what, what the, the future of the Sherwood Hall is going to be. So I'm happy to move the item.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Sorneo, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote on 584, please.
Councilmember Barrera? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Sorneo?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on to ID 598, the sale of surplus aerial fire apparatus to the city of Hollister. And we have Chief Goulding here from the city of Hollister, who has pulled the item. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. As you stated, my name is Jonathan Goulding. I'm the fire chief for Hollister Fire. We provide services to the city of Hollister, the city of San Juan Batista, and the entire unincorporated area of San Benito County. So I pulled this item to thank you guys for the consideration of this. As the staff report outlines, the city of Hollister has ordered a tiller truck. It's scheduled for delivery late next year. And so our interest in this truck is similar to what Salinas has been using it for, and that's to train our personnel ahead of receiving our new tiller truck, so that we can reduce the in-service time once we do actually receive that truck. Being the only fire department in San Benito County other than Cal Fire, we have to reach outside of our county borders for strategic partner. we have to reach outside of our county borders for strategic partnerships. We've been fortunate to have good working relationships with Monterey County. And so I'm here today to say thank you to the city of Salinas and the Salinas Fire Department in bringing us this option. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a motion made by councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by councilmember Rocha. I will just tell Chief Goulding, be prepared for, um, a few claims of side swiping of cars when they're learning how to drive the back end of the tiller truck. With that, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Osornio.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, and thank you for being here with us today. Uh, on to six oh eight, the agreement with the Salinas Valley TVB. Uh, councilmember Valenzuela, you pulled this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull it. Um, I, I took, I took a tour of the facility, and we have such an amazing, uh, welcome center. I don't know if folks know, but it, it beat out a lot of the other cities when the welcome centers were being considered, so, um... That's twice that happens to me, that's twice! All right, all right, Patty, I got you.
Get to the point.
But my, my, my question to the city manager, I guess is, um, I know that a lot of the funding for this, depends on our ability to collect tax revenues from the hotels. How does H two A, um, you know, housing in hotels affect this?
I think it has had an effect, um, over the last several years, so I think you're seeing a decrease in that. I think we, one of the things in talking with our finance directors, that we're going to start looking at sort of how that's doing. The other thing, I think it's important, is we, you saw some of the projects that were, you know, that, uh, are coming or underway. I think it's an opportunity to, and sort of bring some more hotels to the area. Uh, so I think that's part of the, the strategy there as well, is work to increase just more available beds. So H two A seems to be kind of, not necessarily the newer hotels, clearly the older hotels, that's been the focus. So I think we need to work on, um, just bringing more hotels to the area.
Sounds good, and just encourage folks to, um, visit the welcome center, so I move to approve this item.
Okay, motion made by councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote on six zero eight, please.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Osornio.
Yep.
Councilmember Rocha.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. Um, all right, on to six zero nine, we have six out of seven councilmembers who have pulled this item. We'll start with councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, really acknowledge all of your hard work on this and thank all the young people who stepped forward to, to play a role in this. I was in the youth commission from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. I was the last cohort of youth commissioners before the commission went away, and, um, it was a real great opportunity to engage young people in our governance process. But at the time, I do know that we struggled to find that vision and purpose and role for the commission. So bringing it back in the, in the way that you're doing, I think is really going to just cement its purpose and, and make sure that it's a thriving program for the long term. And I really want to highlight the fact that you're creating the program based on the interest of the prospective participants in the program, the youth. I mean, they have different roles set aside within the structure of the council. And it's going to make sure that, you know, every single high school is represented, so I just think it's a great program. Congratulations to you and to everyone involved. Happy to move the item for approval.
Okay, motion made by councilmember Rocha, seconded by councilmember Gonzal- uh, Gonzalez. We'll go on for a final comment with councilmember Sandoval.
This is exciting, and I see a great format, um, some great goals. Um, I'm going to make a small plug for a member-at-large. Um, and the reason was, I was also on the youth commission, and there was a representative from each high school, but there was also a member-at-large. So just a plug for that, and of course, to Sheila Molinari, who was the advisor at the time. Just big props to her, and I got to see her recently at the Hebron Center, so that was really exciting.
How long ago were you on the youth commission?
Not the same time you were.
It was in nineteen ninety-nine, councilmember Rocha. Yes. Point of origin.
All right, uh, we'll go on, councilmember Gonzalez, you also pulled this item?
Yeah, um, I think one of the first conversations that I had with you, Kristin, was on youth council four years ago, um, and, and wanting to bring it back and, and have it increase in its capacity. And similarly, uh, Mr. Mendez, that was also one of the first conversations we had. You know, I've always been very excited, whenever we talk about opportunities to cultivate youth leadership, youth civic engagement, um, you know, very much comes from my experience as, as an educator. But I remember seeing firsthand the effects of participation on the youth council. Uh, my first year of teaching, um, when a student of mine talked to me about her experience on the youth council in Gonzalez, and how not only was she a part of the council, not only were they holding meetings, but they were actually passing policies in town. And it was just incredibly inspiring to see how activated she was, um, and, and how much it helped her grow. So to know that, uh, Mr. Mendez knows that student, worked with that student directly, is, is a great comfort to me, because I know that he sees the potential in something like this, so... Congratulations, very, very, very excited to see this come to fruition, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Barrera, you also pulled this item?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, a lot of times, uh, we get criticized for not doing anything, but just doing this, uh, gives young people an opportunity to get involved in their public service. Make a, you know where I really enjoy the volunteers is when they, they're at the Firehouse Recreation Center, working with seniors and just collaborating together, creating community. And you know, in the LSAL vibrancy plan, we had a lot of young people as well, they just wanted to get involved. We had a young man here in front, um, from this, uh, Leadership Academy, he just says, you know what, I'd like to get involved, and, uh... For people, for young people to say thank you for the good work you're doing on the community, but there's a little bit more to do. I think, that's how I'm done, though. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I also wanted to show my support for this item, um, especially, you know, seeing that there's results. We have two councilmembers, so, um, I, I look forward to seeing who you pick as the next councilmember. You know, I know, right, yeah, and I just, I see all of the talent in a lot of the, the folks that are now getting involved, even with the participation. I mean, I remember, uh, one of the last, um, more Salinas cleanups that, uh, Jose Ariola did, but there was fifty-six volunteers at Caesar Childers Park. The majority of those were youth. And so, um, while there's obviously folks that have, uh, have been here at the city for, for some time, I think that it's, it's just, it's great to have, obviously, that leadership, right? But also getting folks that are interested in local government, wanting to get involved, and shadowing folks, and having them as a resource, I think it just makes a great team. Because even if they don't become the next councilperson, maybe they're the next person that's the next director of a certain department that we have at the city of Salinas. And, and again, it's just, uh, knowing that you're involved in that, I, I have total confidence it'll be a great program. And then, I mean, you know, our city manager, I mean, Gonzalez, uh, got, um, recognized for having a youth council up there, and so did Watsonville, so, um, maybe we can start looking at where we're going to put the next award when Mr. Mendez gets it for us here in Salinas. So happy to support the item, thank you.
Excellent, I'll, uh, I'll just make the comment, I was around, um, in the, in, you know, it's, it's the, youth council's been dormant for, I think you said, five years. Interestingly, the last several years, the youth and government initiative, excuse me, the youth council initiative was really sort of not super successful. Kids, it was after school, um, kids had other requirements of sports and FFA or 4H. Um, and so they were having a really hard time getting consistent attendance at those events. I would just, you know, ask that that be a, an element of consideration in scheduling. You know, part of the birth of YAGI, the Youth and Government Initiative, came from dissolving, you know, the, the youth council, so that we now had in, like, a, a widespread internship, and I think that's been wildly successful. It's also during the summer. So I don't know exactly what that would look like in terms of having a youth council again. I did see several years where it struggled because of, um, a lack of participation from, from the kids, and frankly, just communicating, like, hey, I can't get a ride to City Hall for the meeting at six PM tonight. So I just would ask that there's some consideration there in terms of how it's scheduled and what works best for students to be motivated and excited to be part of a youth council. With that, I think we have a first and a second, and I've made my comments, call for the vote on six oh nine.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Osornio.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, ID six one four, the annual comprehensive financial report. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I just want to make a comment, and I, I want to thank Ms. Selena Andrews, our finance director. I am sure this is a daunting task here, this is a financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. But I just want to read quickly the executive summary in honor of Ms. Andrews. You know, just a little bit that I know this woman, I, I get nervous when I ask her a question, because she's pretty serious. But, uh, Ms. Andrews, I just wanted to say, and I support this, I, I just want to read this. The annual comprehensive financial report serves as a comprehensive financial document that provides an in-depth account of a government entity's financial performance, position, and cash flows over a specific fiscal year. It provides transparency, accountability, and the insight into the city's of Salinas' financial health, enabling stakeholders, including city council, residents of Salinas, creditors, and other interested parties to make informed decisions. So Ms. Andrews, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for this report, and, uh, make a motion to approve when we're ready.
Second.
Okay, uh, I'll, motion made by councilmember Barrera, seconded by councilmember Valenzuela. Call for the vote on six one four, please.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Osornio.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Mayor, and I don't know if Ms. Andrews wants to say something?
I would like to say something.
Sure?
Thank you very much, um, councilmember Barrera. This was a team effort, one person can't do all this. So thank you.
Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I was actually going to have, uh, our city manager, um, on the next topic, just introduce, um, our new acting police chief and our new finance director publicly. I know that's normally something we do at the beginning, but why not do it at the end today?
Okay, so, uh, our finance director, Selena Andrews, uh, she's been with the city a little bit over a year. Uh, she came as assistant city manager, and, uh, I mean, assistant city manager, assistant finance director, and then I got moved to the interim acting finance director, and, you know, we, I've had the privilege of working with her for a few, few months, and I kind of like, well, let's figure out whether you want to work with me yet before we kind of go down this path. And so we're very fortunate to have her, so, very excited. Our, uh, acting chief, Danny Warren, he came back from the, the DC trip, and I asked him to go to coffee, and we had a conversation. Uh, so I'm very pleased that he's really ran with, uh, the role and the responsibility as the, as our police chief, and also, I think, a testament to the command staff and all the men and women of the department. So I think, you know, we haven't not missed a beat, and I think that's just a testament to the department, the organization you have. And frankly, the city manager, very fortunate to have capable folks to kind of reach in and ask to step up, and he stepped up without hesitation, so, uh, with that, I just want to thank both.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and, uh, I'm going to move an item around on the agenda. We have councilmember reports, appointments, and future agenda items after closed session. I'm going to move it up so that we do that now, so that when, when, once we adjourn, we can go into closed session and not return back to the chambers. So I'll start to my left, councilmember Valenzuela, on councilmember reports, appointments, and future agenda items.
Yes, um, I think I reported this last time, but I attended three CE meeting, um, representing the city of Salinas, um, as well as the AMBAG meeting, and so there's a lot happening, especially, um, in the south corridor. Um, and so, as soon as we get a little bit more details, I'll be reporting back on those.
Excellent, councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, I, this past week, I was able to attend the California League of Cities along with my colleagues, Councilman Barrera and Sandoval, a really informative conference. I was able to attend a, uh, session that was led by, um, solid ad mayor Anna Velazquez on increasing homeownership for Latino communities. And it was really interesting that one of the, uh, topics they were discussing was the kinds of housing models that we're bringing onboard really need to be changed in a way to truly incentivize affordable by design. And one of the topics they brought forward was small lot homes. Because what I didn't realize that was discussed in that session was that condominiums are not really being produced as much due to HOA fees associated with them. So it's not being pursued as much as other developments, so small lot homes is brought up as a viable alternative. And, um, there are a lot of, uh, up and coming, uh, developers who are looking at that. So it's a great, great, uh, conference and a lot to learn. I was also able to attend a board of directors meeting for the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. We discussed a lot of important information. We did not have a Salinas Valley Recycles Board meeting this, um, week, but we're looking to reschedule that soon, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval?
Yeah, I also attended the League of Cities, a lot of innovative and great stuff. Had an opportunity to talk with our city manager. Something I'm really excited about, hopefully we can bring in the future, is solar lights. Um, I know that running electricity is, is very expensive, and I just saw some exciting flashing beacons and all kinds of good stuff, that I look forward to seeing how we can bring that to Salinas.
Excellent, councilmember Gonzalez?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to call attention to a few opportunities for residents and community members. Reminding folks that the deadline for the Prevention and Wellness Grant is coming up. Proposals are due October twenty-eighth by five PM. Uh, there is three hundred thousand dollars in total grant funding available, with sixty thousand dollars for each maximum reward. And then wanting to remind folks that this, uh, the October, October twenty-sixth, from twelve to two, is Halloween in the park over at Sherwood Park. And then just wanted to extend, um, my appreciation, uh, congratulations to the folks at ALSAL Center for Fine Arts. Um, I was able to attend their Dia de los Muertos celebration this past, um, Saturday, and it was a great event. It's, it's really awesome to see youth engaged in, in art and, and cultural activities. They had free food, um, we packed the house, it was, it was wonderful to see. So, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Barrera?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, I appreciate the Leadership Academy, the, the people that came forward today. You know, one of the things that, that, uh, they kept talking about was speeding and lighting. A lot of speeding cars, and, and then there's certain areas that are really need, uh, some lighting, so I, I hope we took note on that, uh, Mr. Mendez. It's a great group, and I really appreciated the comments, the... They're happy with the service that we're providing, and then at the same time, they gave us tips on what else needs to get done, so it's a good collaborative effort. Also, as I mentioned earlier, I went on a police ride along with, uh, Officer Steve Hoyt. He is a hoot, Mayor. Hoyt is a hoot. Uh, I want to thank Police Chief Warner for setting me up with that. You're doing a hell of a job out there just in the short time you've been our interim chief. And, and I've asked, uh, interim chief Warner, if, uh, I want to do a Halloween ride along, I want to go check out the people in Montevideo, maybe scare some of my residents out there. So we're going to see if that can happen. Also, um, I want to be participating in Halloween party at the firehouse with all the young people out there. There you go. So for those of you that can attend, Halloween party, uh, October thirty-first. We're going to be one of the judges, and, uh, that's always, that was, that's always a fun group out there. And you know what, I, I want to commend the good work Daisy's doing. I mean, some of these seniors have been having a ball going, getting on the bus, MST bus, going to the beach, going to parties, but now they want to go to Las Vegas. I don't think MST goes out there. So we're going to have to carpool, so, uh, but you know what, things are going great, and to my colleagues up here, this is the last day we're going to be together before elections, you know what? You guys have been doing a hell of a good... You know what, you guys have been doing a hell of a great job, and you know what I hear about people out there? We've been working as a team, we've been focused on neighborhoods. You guys have been doing some great work. Imagine Toward Street for one, just one street, over 30 years, we had a young woman that said, thank you for fixing Toward Street, now could you please go to Del Monte? But you know what, when the community sees what we're doing, that means that we're doing something good. And thank you to IT Carlos, I learned how IT is just connected with every department, and I want to thank him for his good work, and thank you to everybody. I feel like it's Christmas, but it's Halloween.
Councilmember, can you clarify when the Halloween party is at the Firehouse?
Kristin Languis?
October 31st.
There you go.
10:30.
Because these people sleep early.
10:30 AM. Got it, okay. Thank you.
10:30 AM.
Okay, just want to make sure that I don't show up at 10:30 at night. Councilmember Osornio?
All right. You know, that's right, the mayor is always in Halloween spirit. I think she last, you were the...
Mayor McCheese, yes, of the McDonald's crew, yep.
So I wanted to just, again, just celebrating the Buddhist temple of Salinas on their 100 year celebration that they had. City Manager Mendez was in attendance that day, and just really celebrating the temple and the work that those folks have done for 100 years now. So I just wanted to say again, thank you, they had a very good ceremony there, and appreciate the invitation. Also, just wanted to give a shout out to Tatum's Garden, did a Thank a Community Member Day, which was very well attended. I thought it was great to be able to see so many folks use that park. It's, I feel like it's one of our highly used parks, and just wanted to again thank the folks out there for putting that together. It was a really good event. And then also, the Salinas Valley Pride was on that day as well, which was highly attended. And so just wanted to say again, thank you to the organizers of that event that volunteered to put that event on. And then there was, I believe, one last invitation. Ah, the trunk retreat. Trunk Retreat will be happening at the Sherwood Hall. Kristin doing other times on that one, too. What's on to me?
5:30.
Okay, there you go, thank you, Mayor. So 5:30, and that will be on the 30th as well? All right, awesome, sounds good. So yeah, thank you for those events, thank you for obviously being a partner for folks that are doing the trunk retreats. I know I've been speaking with some of the car club community, and they feel that it might be something a little bit safer than having some of the kids go do the door knocking in the neighborhood. So being able to have them there, bringing community together, I think it's going to be a good event. So no other comments, and thank you.
An update on my end, it is Democracy Badge season with the Girl Scouts of America, so I met with Girl Scout Troop 32140, and also Girl Scout Troop 30116. And interestingly, they had a lot of feedback and opinions and questions, which was really encouraging and refreshing to have a group of, two groups of young ladies who were asking really insightful questions about violence in the community, quality of life, what are we doing about homelessness, you know, eight to 13-year-old girls. So those are our leaders for the future, and I was really excited to be a part of their process and getting their Democracy Badge. I also attended Salinas Valley Pride, it's always a great event, and really grateful for the community that organizes it and puts it on on behalf of the City of Salinas, frankly. I mean, I think it's wonderful when we have local volunteers who are doing good things and increasing the quality of life for our residents. I also spoke to the Community Leadership Academy last week, they had a lot of questions for me about what priorities the city council had. So we had a very engaging conversation, and I attended the Hitchcock Road Animal Shelter JPA as an alternate to Councilmember Gonzalez. We are working on a strategic plan for 2025. The JPA is between the city and the county, and we're really trying to figure out if there are additional cities that can participate to create a countywide JPA for animal care. I am the emcee this week for Independent Transportation Network of Monterey County. They have their 100,000th ride, it's out at Laguna Seca, I believe it's on Wednesday. Very proud of that. That actually was a leadership Salinas Valley project that was started by Todd Muck at Tamsi. And 10 years later, it's a project that is now its own 501Z3, and it's fully funded. It helps seniors and visually impaired people with rides, it's door-to-door service. So it's an incredible program. My mother used it when she lost her vision, and I'm a firm believer in it, and excited that they are thriving and celebrating 100,000 rides. So also speaking to Santa Lucia Rotary this week, and Ivy Park Retirement Home. So they want to ask some questions of the city and of the mayor, so I'll be doing that as well. Those are all my comments, and we are now going to go into closed session. Does any member of the public wish to comment on closed session item A, California Government Code Section 54956.9A? All right, seeing none? Hold with me one minute, I still need to go to public comment on Zoom. Does any member of the public wish to comment on closed session? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and Councilmember, I'll, Councilmember Barrera, I'll let you say a few words, and we'll adjourn in his memory.
Max Garcia was a boxing coach for many, many years, I would say for over 20 years. Some of you, you'll remember, he had national champions, young men and women from Salinas at all different levels. He lost, he died, his funeral was going to be here on October 25th, but he was a great community person, and I want to say thank you on his behalf from the family for all the great work. His legacy is in these children, which are now, a lot of them are young men and women. Thank you.
We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.